Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 17th, 2022 meeting of the City of Angels. Rose, let's do your call.
Mayor Rolio.
Present.
Vice Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Councilmember Sisornia.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Storados absent. Staff to the present.
Thank you, Rose. Next, we go pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is number three, report out of closed session. We will actually be going back into closed session after the meeting and report out after the meeting closes. Number four is approval of the agenda or as posted or amended. Have a motion to approve the agenda. Actually, do you have any comment? Have a comment?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
All but none.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. Next is item number five, public comments. Public may address the council on any item of public interest and not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No actions may be taken. Matters to be addressed may refer to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person, but have anybody that wants to say some public comment. Come on up. State your name, and Rose will start it.
Hi. I'm in, she does her too.
Okay, there's no pen.
Oh, sorry.
Good day. Thank you. You want my address on here too?
If you, your name is over.
Okay. So I'm Susan Rudolph, and I live in Angels Camp, and I wanted to come in and say thank you very much for addressing the homeless issue that we had over on Demerit's Nine Road. I was asked to come and thank you guys, because a lot of people were kind of intimidated to come here and say thank you. We've been working collaboratively with the police department, and thank you very much for getting that done in the fall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up.
You said.
Come on up. Oh, come on up.
I was waiting for a signal.
Your signal's here.
Didn't get it.
It's your time.
Read your name.
My name is Karen Myers. I am on the Angels Camp Business Association Board, and I'm here to represent the farmers, or to speak of the farmers market. I'm also the committee chair for the farmers market. So I just wanted to make an announcement that the farmers market is growing and is ready to start on June 10th. We hope everyone will come out and be there on our opening day. We are also going to do our raffle drawing for the, on the first day, and so we hope to see everybody there, and certainly we'll get a bunch of tickets. So it's a fair one, and we're only selling 500. I think we're almost sold out, I hope, yes? So we have a new market manager who was introduced to you a couple of weeks ago, and so we're looking forward to starting a new year, and we have lots of enthusiasm, all the vendors, and if you happen to know of anyone who wants to also come out to our farmers market as a vendor, food vendor, produce, we would love to have more. So, hope to see you there. I also, if I may, address the council, I'd like to give you one of our cars. There, I think you probably have a stash.
Pass them down.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to try to represent Angels Camp Fire Association. Just one more shout out for the Hey to Take Breakfast that's happening this weekend. One more time before it happens, be Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Utica Park. I'd love to see you, bring the kids, and we'll give you a good breakfast. See you Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping that going.
Hi, my name is Carla Santiago.
I can't either.
If I can approach any of you guys some pictures. Kind of just wanted to remind everybody how cute and adorable our town was when we had, oh dear, my, yeah, clotheslines. I realize that this year, I think, some of them got a little too ratty and keep hanging tomorrow. But those are just some of the things that our, our community is mentioning to us. When they come into the store and everything about the trees being trimmed and everything, and they're a little concerned to see that what's sort of going to get done, because it's kind of hard to see the clothesline with the trees so overgrown. So we were a little concerned about that from the job we presented.
Thank you very much.
I'm Matt Russell, and I'm on the Angels Camp Business Association Board, and I just wanted to say it for the council and city staff for helping us to facilitate the junior drop jobs last year. We had 130 kids jump, and everybody had a really good time. It was very successful, so appreciate the music part, and I want to remind everybody that on drop jobs also, that there are people having the first grade in a while, so come on, give them two kids a present.
Do you have a lot of entries for them?
The last half, I think, I have about 20.
Okay.
They come in at the last minute, so I think it's going good for the first time out.
My turn.
Yeah, why is it called the youth parade? It's for anybody, isn't it?
No, it's supposed to be for kids under eighth grade, but.
Some of the entries are.
Some of these are, yeah, but there's usually little kids involved in.
Little kids walking around.
Yeah, and they used to call it the kiddie parade, but I guess people or kids got offended by that. They don't want to be called kiddies anymore, so they changed it to the youth.
Youth, yeah.
The youth.
Youth.
Any other public comment? Come on up.
I may have one online. Richard, are you on the speaker in public comment? I can't hear you. Mary, yes, come on. There you go. I got it now, but this is for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, what do you mean by non items? So I can't comment on the other date?
No, not till we get that as item.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other online, Rose?
Any other public comment or online?
Close the public comment. We move on to item number six, consent agenda. Is there any members of staff or anybody in the council that would like to pull, or members of the public that would like to pull anything off of consent agenda? Okay, I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda, items A through E.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign. Next, we move on to item number seven, regular agenda, item A, discussion and presentation of OPEP PERS modeling, and Rebecca, council, you can ask her.
Okay, so we do have Gov Invest online as well, generally doing a presentation for council, but this is kind of an extension of the conversation that we had at the last meeting with PARs. And, but in addition, city council approved the licensing of Gov Invest software modules for OPEP pension and labor comp change November of 2019. I have worked with Gov Invest in other agencies, specifically with OPEP, the other post-employment benefit liabilities. This contract with Gov Invest expires November of 2022, but I wanted to invite Gov Invest to not only demonstrate, you know, what they have been doing for the city and what we can do with regards to modeling, it's really modeling software. And if you make changes, what does that do to your liability? This is what it is, which then helps identify budgeting changes that might need to be made, or, you know, consideration of funding options, so it's a tool that we can use. So we are a member of CalPERS. CalPERS is providing pension services to all the employees of the city. Right now, we have non-safety retirement calculations for classic members of 2.7 at 55, which is actually very good retirement benefit. And then if you're a Peppra member, which is the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, for members hired after January 2013, it's 2% at 62. So not only do you get a lower percent, you have to work longer before you can get a retirement. And then police safety retirement is 3% at 50 for classic and 2.7 at 57. So again, lower percentage, have to work longer as a Peppra member. And fire safety retirement, and you have to remember, fire prior, I don't remember what year it was, they were volunteer, so they were the last to really be employees of the city. So their calculation is 2% at 55 for classic or 2% at 57. So same percentage, but have to work longer. And so when Peppra went into effect, there were several changes for new employees. So employees have to pay half of their normal cost. So historically, classic employees didn't have to pay anything for their retirement. And for most agencies, they, the agencies paid not only the employee portion, they also paid the employer portion. So employees literally paid nothing to their retirement. When Peppra occurred, a lot of agencies started negotiating with their employees to pay at least the employer paid minimum contribution. So for classic employees, that might be 7% or 8% or 9%, depending on what contract you're in. But that was the first time classic employees kind of had skin in the knee with PARs for their retirement. Peppra employees don't have a choice, and it's not negotiated, it's what it is. You have to pay 50% of the normal cost. So as we start seeing classic employees retire and they get replaced, generally, they're going to get replaced with Peppra members, which costs the city or the agency less, right? And also, there should be, the theory is, a Peppra employee has no unfunded liability. Well, that's not entirely true, because they kind of had to figure out how Peppra was going to work, and in that course, there was some small, like, what are the liabilities that were created under Peppra? But those will get paid off in our city's state liability. In addition, there's caps on earnings for higher wage earners, so regardless, if you make over, you know, that cap, which can change every year, whatever that amount is above, it's non pensionable. You don't get pension on that addition. And then there's restrictions on retired and new interns coming back to work. So what used to happen in the old days, pre-2013, you would retire and come right back, and you would work an extra hire, and a lot of times, especially at the higher level of management, you would retire and come back to the fullment and make way more money. While Peppra figured out the gain, and so they stopped it from happening for the most part. There are some exemptions for fire and safety. And then really, the basis of Peppra was that those employees have to work longer, so that means they're going to contribute for a longer period of time towards their retirement. So the most current actuaries that we have is on page two, so this just kind of gives you a look at, as of 2019, what the unfunded liability is by contract in classic and Peppra versus unfunded as of June 30th of 2020, and what the funding ratio is for each one of those. And then contribution rates for CalPERS on tangible earnings for 2223 are in the second table, and so that gives you an idea of, you know, we have to pay 22.47 for safety police classic, and the employee has to pay 94%. Okay? And then in addition to that, there's prepayments that we have to pay. So the prepayment is specifically to pay for the unfunded liability, because basically, if you think about it like, like if you had an interest on the mortgage, that's what pre-Peppra was for classic employees. So that unfunded liability just kept growing and growing and growing, because we were just paying the, you know, the interest and the principal of Peppra. So the prepayment came into effect after Peppra, and it means they don't care what your current employee base looks like, or what the earnings are, or anything. They're going to give you the employer and the employee rate, and in addition to that, you're going to get a lump sum payment that you have to make for purpose. And that goes up. So when you look at the last table on page two, this is the, first column is the prepayment of 563,700$ that we have to make. That is in addition to the 22.47% of earnings, or the 12, or the 14, or the 10, or the 7. This is in addition to that. And next year, the 23, 24 is 600, then 650. It goes down a little bit in 25, 26, but that is because, I'm not sure, that was a question to me, I'm not really sure what, and then it goes back up. But it's just important to acknowledge that these, these Peppra ones are, those are the ones that are like 91% funded, 87% funded, 86% funded. So that means, you know, that's a pretty good funding ratio. But you can see the problem children in terms of funding for classic, and specifically, it's safety police, and it is miscellaneous classic, those two. Those have been, I believe, probably the longest deployed here, and those have also, the safety police classic is going to be because of the 3% retirement formula. Generally, what happened is those initial contracts may have been like 2% or 2.7, and then it would have been negotiated long time ago to do that 3%, and when that 3% happened, it really increased your unfunded liability, and that's what we're continuing to grapple with today. So we make it a policy here to always prepay the prepayment. So we could pay it, you know, with due or across the fiscal year, but we pay it in the first month, in July, by the first part of July, because if we do that, we save 3% on that payment, and 3% is 3%. So 3% of that 500,000 is what we save. So that's what we do. As long as we have the cash flow to do it, then we do it. It's not like you can eliminate the prepayment, you got to pay it anyway, so we just, we just front those costs. And then for OPEP, those are those other post-employment benefits. We provide retiree health benefits, and we talked about this when PARs was here, and so the approved resolution back in 2000 was where we were agreeing to be subject to Peppra. And that is the minimum required contribution that the city has to make, and that's because we're with CalPERS help. So as long as we stay with CalPERS help, we will always have a pension with them. And then in addition to those besting schedules and the resolutions of the past, it's embedded in all MOU's, that retirement benefit. So they're all different, based on what that benefit was negotiated at. And so each MOU, and whoever retires, of the time that they have their MOU in place when they retire, all get a different funding ratio for their retired employees. And so historically, the city's been a pay-go, which means we just pay this amount. We don't contribute anything to the unfunded liability, nothing. And so generally, what would happen is, if you used a 4% discount rate, which image Parker kind of talked about, discount rate, so he forgot it, was what he put on, and historically, we've been doing like a 2.45 or 2.75 discount rate, which makes your unfunded liability really high. If we used a 4%, the recommended contribution would be almost 450,000$ per year. And inclusive of that pay-go contribution, that would knock it down to 3.2 with your pay-go. So you're seeing a pay-go, you have to pay anyway, and then the 3.2 is what you would be needing on top of that to start whittling away at the unfunded liability. So the funding ratios for OPEP are on page three in this table, and you can see, again, it's not great for classic, and it's fine for Peppra. But OPEP is zero. We have a zero funding ratio, because if you're not contributing anything, you just have a big liability with no outstanding assets, that way. So we are making that change, and so we had talked about this at the, at the PARs item at the last meeting, to go ahead and take that 275,000, this is in our treasury, that was in our OPEP, and contribute that to PARs. And then beyond that, that's where we need to start identifying what other funding mechanisms do we need to put into place in order to start whittling away at those liabilities? Because the PERS is not, as I've seen, much worse in funding ratios. OPEP is not great, but a lot of things can change that, and so I think that's what's important about the Gov Invest modeling, because we can make decisions that can drastically change it, but you need to have that modeling tool to know how far you're going to need the direction. So I'm going to pass it over to Gov Invest.
Okay. Should I be using the, trying to use the version that's on the screen right now, or pulling out my own, or keep the same slides?
We'll just use mine.
Okay. We'll just read my mind when I'm thinking of going to the next slide.
Okay.
And I'll sure be fine. Thanks so much for letting me be part of your meeting, and I also appreciate the fact that I get to do this remotely. Not that I don't love Angels Camp and all the drop jobs on the sidewalk. I could go through this as quickly as possible, and it'll be a little quicker than I expected, because you'll prevent the justice. Explain a lot of what was going on. One of the reasons I'll be going through it again is that pensions are really complicated, and it's important to hear it two or three times before it clicks. So we figure we'll gag up a year, and each tell you the same thing once, and then hopefully, when we end the meeting, it'll all be clear. So I'm going to start with some of the basics again, that Rebecca talked about. Next, talk about how your agency is doing relative to other agencies. She explained where you were in terms of the basics, but I'm going to tell you where you are relative to other people. We'll talk about what's happened since then, the results that are there. The CalPERS does their evaluations once a year, and the most recent actual evaluation is that of June 30th, 2020, and a lot has happened since then, so we'll talk about what's happened since then, and then talk about some of the things that you might be able to do, or the things where you have some control, and to think about taking next steps to put yourself in a better position to handle those things that are outside of your control. So in terms of pension basics, I'm going to start with very, very basic part, which is get a defined benefit plan, and funding a defined benefit plan. The math is complicated, the concepts are easy. The concept is that you're supposed to stick in enough money, money coming into the plan with enough to pay for the money going out of the money. Money in equals money out, not that complicated. Money going out of the plan comes from benefits and expenses. The expenses are actually very, very small. CalPERS charges somewhere between 10 and 15 basis points, 0.1 or 0.5% of assets. So it is one of the most cost-effective benefit administrators in the country. So most of the money going out the door is benefit. Money coming in, as was explained before, comes from a combination of the city's money, the employee's money, and investment return. And of these three, investment return is by far the largest. Depending on how the markets are doing, investment returns could be anywhere between 60 and 90% of the money that ends up going out the door. So when, what that means is a lot of, by, by pre-funding, unlike what you're doing with OPEP, where you're going to pay as you go and have no investment return. On the pension side, the costs are a lot lower because you have to pre-fund it, but movements in the market can end up costing you a lot, adding to your cost very quickly, because you, those, they have a lot of assets, and it can end up affecting the small numbers of force that you pay. To do that, they end up kind of putting, using a lot of assumptions as to what's going to happen in the future. Economic assumptions are those that relate to money, so inflation, investment, saluting growth. Demographic assumptions relate to which people are going to be getting benefits, so when are people going to retire? Who might become disabled? How long they're going to live before they die and something is benefits? And who might leave without collecting benefits? All of that CalPERS takes into account, trying to grasp the right amount of money that's going out the door, so they can charge you the correct amount of money to put into the plan. As was mentioned before, you've got two new benefit structures for your police. The new benefit structure, we can sort of skip over the next couple of slides very quickly. Two benefit structures for fire, and two benefit structures for miscellaneous, focusing on whether or not they were hired before or after 2013. This graph shows the, that as of June 30th, 2020, about half your population, half of them, must be paid to Peppra employees, the new employees hired since 2013, versus those hired since 2012. And over the next few years, the people who were hired before 2012 are projected to retire, those are black bars, and are being replaced by new employees who go into Peppra plan. So the lower cost plan is going to end up taking over. Now, it's about half of your normal cost, it's going to end up being 2/3 in about five years, 8% in about 10, and almost all of your, your contribution requirements that you're covering, almost all your people have to. Next slide talks about, okay, how are you doing relative to other agencies? And to do that, we're focusing basically on two metrics. One is your funding percentage, how your assets compare to your liabilities. And again, they're calculated as of June 30th, 2020, because that's the last time CalPERS did actual evaluation. They are, they do evaluations for 2,000 agencies across the state. Getting all that data together and processing it, sending it out, takes a lot of time, a lot of manpower, so they're usually behind on this whole thing. Their next evaluation report, which will be out of June 30th, 2021, they expect to send out the door in early August of this year, which would impact your contributions in the 23, 24 year. So the contribution, so this report, the June 30th, 2020 actual evaluation report, is the one that determines your contribution to CalPERS that's required for the 22, 23 fiscal year that's about to start. The second thing that we're focused on are total contribution percentages, so that's the amount you're required to pay, and as Rebecca mentioned before, they ask you for money partly as a percentage of pay, the ongoing cost, the normal cost, plus a fixed dollar. We pull it all back together, put it together as a percentage of pay, so that we can compare you against other agencies throughout the state. On the next slide, we talk about which agencies we compare you to. Since you're one of the smaller agencies in CalPERS with under 100 active employees in miscellaneous and in safety, you are in what CalPERS refers to as the risk pool, where you share demographic experience. So in the past, before the risk pool existed, if you had one service-connected disability or service-connected debt, police force, fire department, that might raise you. or service-connected debt with an esports or fire department, that might raise your costs for the next decade. Now, with the risk pool in place, those experiences are shared amongst all small agencies throughout California with the risk pool. So those were all the small agencies. So we compared you to, on a sort of atlas-to atlas basis. So your classic miscellaneous plans are comparing against the other classic ones. The Pepper against the Pepper, the same thing for the safety side. So you can see on an atlas-to atlas basis where you are. And the short answer, as we see in the next few graphs, is you're okay, you're not great. You're pretty much in the middle. Your funding percentage on miscellaneous was 72%, and as you can see, almost all the agencies in California has at that point where somewhere between 70 and 80%. Your contribution requirements on the next page. You're required to pay 36% of pay. That is about, right about in the middle. Again, it's hard to tell, this graph, because there are a bunch of agencies with under 30%, and you're in the low 30s, so you're right about the middle of the agencies across the state right now. For the Pepper side, say, everything is sort of squeezed together. You're a little below average, but not far off where everyone else is. All the plans started in 2013, they're almost all in the same place. Your agencies, all the data that's funded, your contribution requirement is almost normal cost plus a tiny extra dollar amount on the extreme. So you see that you're required by 8.8%, and which is basically where the middle of the path where everyone else is paying on the miscellaneous side. For safety, on the next screen, the fire plan, you're almost 80% funded, which puts you above the average, which is in good shape. Your contribution, because of that, you don't have as big an unfunded liability contribution. Your fire contribution is down to 20% at the lower end of contributions throughout the state of California. On the police, your funded percentage is pretty much close to the middle, which means higher unfunded liability, higher contributions. So my guess is the reason this is so high, go back to police for a second, is that the size of your police force now, your regular, your classic police force, is probably very few people left in it. And so spreading that cost over very few people increases the funded percent of pay dramatically to 221%, the highest in the state. On the Pepper side, though, what we see for fire, again, pretty much in the middle, 87%. So your contribution on the next screen is one of the lower ones in the state, about 11%. Great news. On the fire side, on the police side, on the next screen, your funded percentage is good, 91%. A little above half, and your contributions on the next screen are right in the middle. That was very fast way to say one more time, you're in good shape, not great shape right now. And this was as of June 3, 2020, a lot has happened since then. So I'm going to start with the mostly good news, which is the big thing that happened on the investment return side is that CalPERS earned 21.3%, which is 14% more than they were assuming they were going to get. And what that means on the next screen is that more money coming from investment return means less money coming from contributions. And one thing I don't have in these slides that I do want to mention, I had a phone call this morning with CalPERS actuaries, who are good to do their best to finish up the 2021 report, and that although they reported this 21.3% return and have been announcing it over and over against everything they did, they told me that that's actually not the right number. They sort of found another $6 billion, which, again, I understand for most of us, $6 billion seems like a lot of money for CalPERS. And that is just a, yeah, a little bit of money that they found that they understated for. The return's going to be closer to 1%. So good news, they under-reported. But again, this was the best return that they've had in a decade, and one of the top five returns they've had of in all time. Now, one of the things to notice from the graph list is the green bars are up now are the returns that they've had on a year-by-year basis compared to the red line, which is their assumption. You'll notice that some years it's higher, some years it's lower. In a few of the years during the dot-com crash with the Great Recession, when the economy went badly and the markets, after what they really got, CalPERS did misrule. What happened in the late 90s, for those of you, you know, those of you who remember, was the dot-com bubble. And every year, if everybody's getting double-digit returns, everybody thought they could continue getting double-digit returns forever. CalPERS was doing that, and then the dot-com bubble burst, and they lost money. When that happened, agencies had to pay a lot more. They were not happy about this. So CalPERS figured, it's all going to come back, got more aggressive in their investments, and you'll see in the next few years, double-digit returns again for a few years. But what happened was they did that one day aggressively. They were the top four title returners across the country. But then when the Great Recession came, they, because they were so aggressive, they were in the bottom four title returners. They had a 24% loss, the biggest loss by far any year in their history. And with less money coming from investment returns and more money coming from your contributions, they had to raise contributions at the worst possible time because you were all going through a recession. And they realized that they need to lower the risk of the portfolio to still get good returns, but not quite be quite as aggressive. But the problem is, if you expect less money to come from investment returns, lower the risk, you lower the return. You suspect the return, less money from investment return means more money needs to come from you. And they want, if they did that, maybe raised your contributions again just when you couldn't afford to do it. So they decided, the next screen sort of talks about this, to say, to lower the risk of the portfolio, they created a funding risk mitigation. What the policy said was, they want to lower the risk of the portfolio. But since they know it's going to raise costs, they're going to wait until they get a big return higher than expected, their expected return. When your contributions are going way down, they're going to take that opportunity to lower the risk and lower the future expectations and raise them back up a little. Not nearly as much as what you just gave, but get back a little while they move over every time it goes over the expected return. So they set that policy in 2015, and they waited for a year in which they would beat the investment return by at least 2%. And last year was the first year that they did that. The good news was they needed by 14%, they needed by a lot. So they're able to lower the risk of the portfolio and lower the expected return by 0.2%. Lowering that raised contributions up, but not nearly as much as it's going to be lowered. And I'll show you the relative impact of it on a slide we just launched. Now, that was all part of something CalPERS does every four years. CalPERS is required by law to review all of their assumptions, look at their experience, review their assumptions, and try and reset expectations for the future. So they made a series of changes. The biggest one, I thought, was the discount, lowering it to 7%. They also raised, lowered the inflation assumption from 2.45 to 2.3, based on the fact that inflation had been still low for so many years, still hasn't declined, to improve that and watch inflation come up because of the demographic odds, who do not want to see us getting great. Way through the assumption, they changed from 2.75 to 2.8. And they made some minor changes to demographic assumptions, to lighten expectations with kind of a weight, visibility combination. They wanted big changes because they knew that, basically, the COVID years had come in. And the experience in the COVID years, they don't expect to be replicated in the future. They don't expect us to have epidemics all the time. And I really hope you're right about that one. So, by the way, I am, I've been going through all of this, trying not to take a breath through the entire presentation. If you have questions at some point, it's good to stop me. I realize that I still have a tendency to speak, as I was talking, growing up in New Jersey, which is as fast as possible, and people in the real world don't tend to like that. So if you have questions, please interrupt me and ask, because I'm understanding everything I say. So we'll go to the impact of these changes. First thing, as I mentioned before, there's a significant reduction in your unfunded liability. The red line is where things were expected to be. They've got the discount rate where it was and just earned their 7% return. The green line is where it now is with the 21% return. So what we're seeing is it was supposed to be $6.5 million of unfunded liability. You're down to 4.8. You basically lowered your unfunded liability by 1.7 million, which is about a quarter. So that's nice, the markets were jealous. Next slide, in terms of your funding percentage, your funding percentage went up by 7.5%. It went up by about 9% thanks to investment return. They took back about 1.5% with discount, great change. So you're at 80%, you weren't 72 overall. And again, you were in good shape before, everybody else has moved like this also. So the entire state is in better shape right now than it was before, and that's good news. In terms of your contribution, contributions are expected to go down, less money required from you. Looked like it was going to keep going up until 2031, the next decade. Instead, it's starting to come down. So the markets have given. And I do want to say, some information I have that I just got today, so not on these slides, but is part of the sort of warning that I need to give all clients on a regular basis, which is the markets give, the markets can take away. As of last Friday, and I had a call with CalPERS this morning, CalPERS was down 5% this year. That's not much different than the pension fund that I was talking to all across the country. So we're not expecting that 20% return. We're not even at this point, hit the target of 6.8. And what that means is you'll have one good year where things start coming down, and then if they stay at the down 5% green line, it'll move right back up closer to the red line. So costs are going to go up. Now, the good news is, as I mentioned before, there's a timeline between when this happens and when you're charged for it. Right now, the experience that you're paying for in the next fiscal year, the one that begins in July, is from the experience that happened in the year ending June 3, 2020. By using our software and taking this into account early, you know in advance that your costs will be going up, coming down, and then going back up. That gives you an opportunity to start making plans and start acting. So a lot of the things that are going on here are outside of your control. What happens with the markets outside of your control, to some extent outside of CalPERS. What CalPERS does from their assumptions is definitely outside of your control. On the other hand, if you can, at some point, have additional money available and can put more money towards this pension plan, the sooner you start doing that, the sooner it starts earning investment return, the less it's going to cost you overall. So some of the things that other cities are doing, and that you can do if you decide to move forward and give your staff direction to work with us to start making plans, you can either start allocating additional funds, either on a regular basis or when you have additional revenue and you have a surplus in the budget, to make, even make additional payments to CalPERS. Some agencies are just setting up internal reserves. Others are doing, it sounds like you just work for PARS to set up 115 trusts for both pension and OPEC, starting to put money into a 115 trust for pension now, while your revenues are strong. Before CalPERS asks you for that extra money, will allow you, instead of earning about half a percent to 1% that you're earning on your internal fund, also state laws require them to be invested in safe, short-term government, fixed income vehicles. You can be conservative, but a little more aggressive than that, maybe earning 4%. You do that for three or four years, you've just got more money available to make payments to CalPERS with. So again, you spend a little bit of extra money aside, you're going to use it for that purpose, put by putting in the 115 trust, still retaining some flexibility for moving forward. I've talked to agencies across the state, across the country, about considering that. And they've gone, to a large extent, the window for potential allocation is probably closing or closed for now. And we can talk about what those are. Hundreds of agencies across the state, across the country, thousands of agencies across the state have issued them. A couple of years ago, when the rates were closer to 2% at eight cents, now the rates are closer to 4, almost 5, and the returns are about the same range, probably a little less. And the thing is, you don't have to pick just their approach. Rebecca, we just, I just got off a call earlier this afternoon with, so folks working with, up in Southern California, and they're taking a multiple bond approach, taking money from different places, putting a little bit in each year, finding some, some resources they have to be able to get more. So all of that is to try and get you to think about where pensions are in your priority. And while I don't have a presentation, I'm right here for OPEC. I do know the answer to funding percentage, since you asked for your money aside there. But the issues are similar for OPEC, for retirement health. And one of the things that we've also been asked a lot of recently is if you have extra money, if you find an extra $100,000, and you want to put it aside towards one of your plans, where do you get the biggest bang for your buck? Is it giving it to CalPERS for pension? Is it putting it in a 115 trust and holding it for a few years for pension? Or is it putting it into a OPEC plan and starting to pre-fund? And depending on your situation, the answer varies from agency to agency. So these are the kind of things that I'm not expecting you right now to just jump up and say, hey, we've got a lot of extra money, let's pay it all off now. But to start thinking about where it is in your priorities, because the reality is, and I've talked to agencies for decades across many states, I know that pensions are rarely the number one priority of any city council. Very seldom do people come running in here to talk to you, saying, oh, I'd really love to have your pensions better funded. So you can always end up being the third priority, the fourth. And the thing is, when, if you wait until the money comes in, you're going to spend something on the top two items because they're right there. If you want to ever get these taken care of, third priority, fourth priority, fifth priority, you need to decide in advance and make a plan beforehand as to where that money's going to come from, and what portion of the money you're going to keep setting aside a little bit at a time, baby steps to get you where you want to be. That's all I have planned to say. I'm happy to answer questions. Everybody could have all the speakers.
Council, you have any other questions?
And the, thank you, Ira, that was wonderful. And the other thing, just to keep in mind, is, you know, when we have records, basically, set aside to offset whatever liabilities we have, it makes our financials look so much better. And when our financials look good, we have a better ability to grant. We have a better ability to get interest low for any debt that we wanted to take on. And if we ever were in a position where we needed to do any sort of bonding, that's important to me, is less pressure for us. So it's always important that it's not just about looking at today or tomorrow or, you know, the next day, it's looking at it holistically, and ensure we're in a really good condition from a long-term perspective. So I think things like this, if you step to the main step, really start shifting a little bit of all of these things.
I do have one question for Ira. What is the average rate of return for CalPERS, like 1984 to 2001? I have, there's a graph. Do you know what the average rate of return that they've been getting? I see 35.4 was a high. I see 35.4 was a high, 27, 21, and then in the Great Recession, it was a negative 24%. So like, what is the average rate of return that they get?
Give me just a moment. I happen to have a spreadsheet with all of that information. And it's calculated, so all I need to do is figure out where I can get it from myself.
What?
So I won't lose it. And then, so give me just, just a moment.
And the intent of the prepaid effect, we get the little burner burner system here, is to feed off the unfunded liability, which in most cases is all the possibility. And the majority of it is really to possibly deliver work. And so that, the intent of that and the application of that is purely to squeeze that off. So the theory is at some point, not tomorrow, but at some point, we won't have that piece of it. And then you shift so that that paid off for that plastic pool, and you just got cover numbers. And at that point, this is the point where I want to get better.
Which is important.
Which is important.
Yeah, this, that little graph right there was kind of nice to see where the classic, the classic dropped off in the. I read, you're good, Ira, shoot.
Yeah, just, just shoot it to me in an email.
Just shoot an email, and it's not, yeah, I was just, just out of my own curiosity, just wondering what the average is. And then I'll open it up real quick. Is there any public comment on this at the moment? Okay, because this was a discussion I had a moment, so.
Any online public comment?
All right, thank you very much, Ira.
Thank you, Ira. Yeah.
You're still there.
I guess this doesn't have, back to 1996, since 1996 up through 2021, they averaged just under 8%.
Yeah, 8%.
So, but again, there's break years there.
Right. Exactly, 24, okay. Thanks, Ira.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Again, let me know, we're happy to come back whenever you have any questions.
All right, next move, we'll move on to item 7B, discussion and presentation by Destination Angels Camp, Ms. Debbie.
Yep. So before we start, what I do want to do to the council, I think what's clear to me, and I've talked to Tim as well, is the city has, for many years, not been available to DAC since we needed to. Per the Formulation Resolution for Destination Angels Camp, there are actually supposed to be three representatives on the DAC board and on the executive committee. And so.
We have one.
A council member, the director, the city administrator, and a planner. And that has not happened. So I think that historically, the city administrator would come give me sometimes, but I think all of us just thought, well, you know, we're all relatively new. So that some council member was going to be appointed, and that's really the entirety of the city representation of that. And that's just not the case. And so what is, what has poured over the last many years is a disconnect between what DAC is doing and what the city needs. And then that's also created overlap of functions and whatever else can go wrong when you're not communicating on the same page. So, you know, I talked to, talked to Tim, and I think, you know, what's important is that DAC is a public-private partnership. And I think there's, there are a lot of things that they've done that have been instrumental in successes for the city. And I think we can continue down that game. We just have to get to, well, what does that look like going forward, and what does that mean? And I think that, you know, us being more involved with DAC, being on the board, being on the executive committee, and being in those conversations, which makes perfect sense, that's probably why it was in that resolution, I think can help facilitate that. And so, you know, while this was an initial scope, I think it's clear that, you know, we just weren't on the same page. And so, you know, I'm going to let Doc, Tim speak about some of their accomplishments over the last several years. But our intention is to kind of come back and grind people, get much more involved with the board and executive committee, and hammer out through what we want to, how we want to facilitate the partnership going forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yes, so thank you, council and staff, for allowing me to be here. For those of you that don't know me, I am Tim Oski, and am current board chair or president for Destination Angels Camp. Just wanted to provide a little bit of history, some background, and even some highlighted information. Destination Angels Camp was founded in 2012 as a private-public partnership to revitalize and assist this beautiful city that we all love so much. DAC was the brainchild of Bob Trincaro and Ann Forrest, two well-known and well-respected advocates for our city, and two people I have the honor of calling friends. Bob and Ann took me under their wings and encouraged me to join DAC in 2016. Since then, I have worked with four city administrators, five mayors, and many council members. With each new administration, it is our privilege to present our accomplishments and successes through this partnership. The exciting part for me is not only sharing how Destination Angels Camp and the city's partnership has evolved and grown, but how successful it has become. We now boast some of the most prominent business and community members as members of our executive board. Their commitment to this city and its economic development is only getting stronger. As the board chair, I'm honored to be standing here before you all to share our story. In your board packets, you were able to read about some of the major financial impacts this partnership has made in recent years. It's important to take a look back over the past several years as economic development has not continued in more than two budget years. So I'm just going to highlight a few, and I know there's a, there's a lot, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds. But we've had a lot of success with educating and informing our city in a lot of several, few campaigns. One was to gain a two-thirds voter approval for a sales tax increase of 7.25 to 7.75 in the election of 2018. That became effective in 2019, pre-pandemic. We were also successful educating and informing people to gain a majority voter approval for the TOT transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12%. Also huge because that was elected in 2019 and effective in 2020 during the pandemic. We were successful educating and informing in a campaign to gain majority voter approval to eliminate the elected position of city treasurer recorder, recorder, to an appointed position, which you guys had the privilege of doing recently. That campaign was in 2019 and effective in 2020 as well. We were also successful in educating and informing for a campaign on Prop 218, for an increase in the city water and wastewater rates. Those rates were effective in the fall of 2019. So as you can see, we've, we've helped with this partnership create a recurring revenue for the city. From July 1st of 2019 to date, DAC has provided a wide range of general business assistance to 512 individuals inquiring about business opportunities, from developing business plans, to seeking marketing support, to pursuing financial assistance, to searching business locations, applying for various business licenses and permits, seeking information on city services, to support from projects through city planning, building department, planning commission, et cetera. I kind of did some quick math, and that's literally one person every other day coming into the city office asking about opening a business and tying up countless staff hours if DAC were not able to assist in that one venture alone. So this list is long, it's impressive. When we are able to look back, but tonight, it is our goal to move forward. To move forward with a new partnership, a stronger partnership than ever before. A partnership that has the participation of each one of you on the city council and each one of you on the staff. A partnership that we will build and mold together to make our city better than ever. We have a couple of letters that we would like to have read into the record. Would you like me to do that, or would somebody from staff like to read those?
If you wouldn't mind.
Perfect. So I have one here, and these are in your packet as well, we just wanted to read them so that they were on record. First one is from Lori Giannini, the CEO of 39th District, from the Calaveras County Fair. And it says, it's addressed to Rebecca. I have the distinct honor of serving on the Destination Angels Camp Executive Board. I joined the board in 2019. Bob Trincaro encouraged me to participate. Bob was one of the founding members of the organization. He had great aspirations for the city, which I shared. The city, proud of its legacy, but at the same time, creates a culture that fosters new business. DAC encompasses this philosophy. Staff works with current businesses, creating business plans, new strategies, and during the pandemic, with a support system for small and corporate businesses alike. Staff assisted businesses, assisted businesses in reinventing themselves. The outreach helped with, with business retention within the city. During my tenure, the staff has courted new businesses, and many have come to fruition in the current tumultuous climate. The staff shows great professionalism in working with potential businesses. Confidentiality is particularly important in clients. Public Information Office, DAC has functioned as the city's messenger. Tax measures, water and sewer rates were successfully, successful campaigns facilitated by DAC. Working with the Office of Emergency Services and assisting with PSS events within the city limits is extremely important to the businesses and residents. The office has remarkable foot traffic and assists tourists and residents providing information and/or resources. As a member of DAC Executive Board, I want to encourage the city to continue to partner with DAC. Consider funding the organization fully. DAC fills a need. Economic development and business retention is key to the success of our quaint little city that hangs their clothes across the main street, jumps frogs, and cooks meat and berries. Mark Twain said, "When everyone is looking for gold, it's time to be in the pick and shovel business." That is Destination Angels Camp, the pick and shovel. I want to thank you for your careful consideration. Signed, Lori Giannini, CEO of 39th District. The next letter, we don't have Lori or Mark Wilson, I'm lying, okay? Read something over there.
You can read.
Yeah. The next letter is from Mark Wilson. He owns Signal Service, so. I'm CEO of Signal Service, a 46-year-old company with 30 employees. Our subscribers range throughout the Sierra foothills, the San Joaquin Valley, and the Eastbury Bay Area. My first contact with DAC was with board member Larry Cornish in 2016. At the time, our business office was located in Balacito, and Larry asked me to consider relocating to Angels Camp. He and Debbie Ponti gave me an overview of possible office locations, and as a result, we were pleased to be headquartered in the cornerstone building in downtown Angels Camp. I am now a board member of Destination Angels Camp and serve as treasurer. At a DAC board meeting last year, Melissa Eads, at the time Angels Camp Administrator, presented current information on the city. Her report included the results of the California State Auditor's Office Audit Program, which identifies local governments at high risk for the potential of waste, fraud, abuse, or mismanagement, or that have major challenges associated with their economy, efficiency, or effectiveness. And they cites the website they call this from. The website compares and ranks California's cities from 1 to 423, with 1 being the worst. Melissa was proud to report that in 2020, the city's ranking had risen dramatically to 269th due to a much improved score of 77.88, earning at a risk level of low. I was curious to look up Angels Camp's past ranking and found that the State Auditor's Audit Program only goes back four years. I was surprised to discover that the city's ranking in fiscal year 2016 to 2017 was considerably worse. 168 out of the state's 423 cities, again, with 1 being worse. Angels Camp overall risk of financial distress rating was moderate due to a poor score of only 62.27 out of 100 points. This dramatic improvement in Angels Camp's financial health in just three years can be attributed in part to DAC's collaborative role as the city's de facto PR agent, helping win hearts and minds for ballot measures, projects, and programs. Funding DAC is an investment in Angels Camp's future. Please consider our request for $75,000 to support the variety of economic development services and projects identified in our State Auditor's Report, in such regards to Mark Wilson, DAC Treasurer. I believe we have one more letter to read, but he's here, so I'm going to let him leave the board.
Well, actually, I have a letter in your packet, I already kind of have to read. I want to tell you what DAC's done for me. First off, my name is David Backer, I'm with Calaway's Recovery Systems. And I'm a 95-year-old company, and I've been servicing this area for the last nine years. I came, I came to Angels Camp from Calaveras County, really knowing no one. And I stumbled through the first couple of years, primarily with my operation to get it in line and bring it back together. And along the way, I met Debbie Ponti and the whole crew at DAC. And I suddenly found a place where I could find my customers, find a place that I had a voice amongst my customers. And Debbie's done a good job of really, I think, highlighting this town, every business in this town. When someone comes to this town, it's not just about where you want to be located. She wants to tell you about the infrastructure that's here, the things that we have to accommodate. Those are the kinds of things that when someone comes, housing is a big issue. Those are the kinds of questions that a business, I have 30 employees here. You know, my biggest struggle is having a place for them to live, where they can, you know, commute to work. There's, there's hope in there. When we bring that, our connection with the, uh, half-cap humanity, excuse me, I think, which Destination Angels Camp has been a voice of, is a great opportunity for this, this town to grow and bring other, other developments similar to that to this town. But it's also really recently been a, a voice for me, you know, to bring an issue before the, the all the citizens here that affects everyone. And it's been a very quiet issue in this, in this community, and that's the landfill. We have a, we have a crisis in here, there's a landfill here in La Crete, that's got two years left on it. And then, you know, it takes five years generally for a, a new cell in the landfill. They're just in the impotent stages of permitting, re-committing the next cell of the landfill. Well, to close the existing cell and open a new cell, we're looking at $35 to $40 million that's going to come, come new. And there's a, there are funds that are, that are allocated for it, but right now, the county's running a $3.5 million deficit every year running that landfill. And when I stand before the board and I speak about it before the board, I just one, one dozen persons, bring in an issue before the board for a witness by many, many people in the county, particularly, you know, the people who started the, the concept of the landfill. It was a shining star when it was, when it was first birthed. But over time, there has been funding there, and it's in a crisis situation right now. For me to stand up and tell everyone they have some kind of crisis, it's pretty self-centered in that I've got the solution that I'm going to be writing on a whiteboard. Well, it affects all of my customers, it affects, which is about half of the county, and half of the county owns their own. Well, how do I get that board out? I mean, you know, you've got to, maybe a public works department that, you know, wants to keep the landfill just the way it is, and, you know. to keep the, the landfill just the way it is, and, you know, somebody who's starting the landfill has, you know, a love for it, but the laws have changed, and we're, we're in a changing dynamic environment. And while solid waste seems rather simple, you pick it up, take the landfill, there's a lot of things that are happening at the state level right now that are requiring us to, to not get any organic submitted on landfill. All I have to say is I've got a real issue that affects every single person in this county, and without the voice of DAC, I wouldn't be able to be in front of the board of supervisors like I am, I'm able to get that message across or to bring, bring that message to you. It's a relatively new, um, birth itself in the last two months or so, with, with information and data that we could verify and bring forward. So I think without, without DAC, without a voice, without being able to ask the questions of where can I locate my next transfer station? Is there an opportunity in, in Angels Camp? Is there an opportunity outside of the county? This, this, this group is really where the answers are. The board is going to listen to staff, and staff is going to do what they think best, but we wanna have a voice. We wanna come here, and we wanna be heard as business people. And I don't think I just speak for myself, but there's a whole bunch of people out there that are concerned about, you know, the highway, you know, the, the, the 449 crossing, and what's that gonna do? Where are businesses gonna go? And what's gonna be a truck route, what's not? These are all questions that, you know, we ask ourselves every day, but when we put it all together and we put our minds together and we can approach and ask the questions and get the answers that all of us can share, and it, it means a lot to, to a business here, that there's stability, that there's a voice, and that you're not standing at the podium alone. And that is what DAC has really been able to do for my company, and I know that the folks that have come up here to, to be hosted by Debbie really get the hopes or maybe a part of the tour, and that's time it would be taken away from your staff. And there are all other projects that, that DAC has done, uh, you know, the, the logo and, and a number of things that Debbie even talked about, also that, that are at hand that maybe we can help, help beyond just asking for the $75,000. We have something to offer the city. We have a staff there that will, will run down whatever we need to do to find out what, what's gonna take, get somebody here or to help the city or, or to make things work. But this is a great group, and I encourage you to fund it, if you're asking them to build it. And I know it's tough now, but, you know, we're not asking for maybe what we would ask for two years ago, but we wanna help you, and we need to stay healthy as well. So that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, mayors and councilmembers. I'm Debbie Ponti with Destination Angels Camp. So I wanna just, uh, provide a brief question and closing. So I've been with Destination Angels Camp since 2017. Prior to that, I had started with 2012 under Bob Trent Carroll in the Forest. So a new resolution wanted to play. I don't know who, who Mr. Sullivan over here was on the city council, and I know he started on the DAC board at some point in development of things. Um, but the resolution was established so that it was a public-private partnership, and I went through a lot of legal maneuverings, you might say, to make that work, make that efficient, et cetera. And it was at that time that the city council representative, city administrator, city planner, or commissioner was on the board, and it's been that way ever since. So I wanna correct the record. So there have been a member of the city council and city planning and city administrator on the DAC board, enlisted in all of our commission as being a partner in this. Whether or not somebody's been a tenor is never a story. So I will say that it's been a healthy partnership in the last, you know, 12 years that we've been in existence, the last two of them had a town with COVID, and how we attend meetings, and so on. So with that being said, we also have met with city council and passed the DAC board, um, and developed a plan as to what we need to be doing for the city. So it is a joint effort of the board of directors, who have city council members on there, and eventually these plans have become the core council, to basically provide the direction for DAC to take. And so everything you see here, basically, is the direction of the city council for the DAC board blessing. With that being said, many people don't understand in general what economic development is. So there's kind of many phases of economic development. So if you build it, it'll come. You don't have that built out yet. 449 and North Side of Town has been, I won't say neglected, but not a priority in regards to infrastructure. So it's been hard to do anything in those areas, because we haven't been able to build and plan for it and say for developer, this is where we want your product. This is where we want the major hotel. This is where we want your big five. This is where we want your big shopping center, whatever that may be. But I have to tell you, since being on DAC for the last four or five years, that's been a real effort of the city to plan for that and move forward. And many councils prior to you, including yourselves, have put together money to score a lot of the infrastructure for those particular projects. So it's coming. It takes time, and this isn't done in a year. So it takes a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of planning, a lot of effort on many people's parts to move those projects forward. So that's infrastructure, economic development. So we look at transportation, circulation, we look at curb under sidewalks, we look at water steward, we look at internet, we look at housing, and now we're looking at solid waste. Because in Angels Camp, your contract with Calaway's is everything goes to Rock Creek. And if Rock Creek closes, it's gotta go somewhere else. And if it goes somewhere else, who's gonna pay for it? Right now, the residential property will pay about $150 a year. Commercial properties pay them. And so that's gonna be increased costs. And one of the goals is to look at infrastructure and look at planning and look at where we want to have a light industrial center. Because when Mark Wilson came in 2016, he didn't wanna be in downtown Angels Camp. He wanted a light industrial park. Because he doesn't have customers who come into his office. He didn't care to be downtown. He was looking for a place where it was an industrial park, so he could be over there and run his business and not have to worry about downtown historical district, where people park, how people park their cars all day long so they can work, et cetera. So there's a lot of thought to that. And so with that, that's why the infrastructure for that industrial park, because there's many little businesses like that that would like something like that versus where they are today. So infrastructure is a big key, and I feel that's where it's been a healthy public-private partnership that we've set at the table. And I've been included in a lot of different meetings with Cal fans, with elected officials, with planners, developers, engineers, in trying to figure out where those sites are going through and how we can move forward. I bring that information back to the DAC board, so these business leaders, which are 15 of them on the board, all can see in the question of what's going on and be impacted. The second part to this, and I think this is gonna intended a mixer like me on purpose, you know, what does Debbie do all day long? So this is, I would call it economics. We have a lot of small businesses in town. We don't like, have a lot of big corporate companies. So all these small, called mom and pop shops, they'll find that use are friendly at the city level, and they look for someone who can just show them the ropes. You can sit down and talk to them without the fear of, oh my gosh, public information ads, or, you know, this is gonna get reported to this new council meeting, or whatever it might be. So we sit down and we talk what it is. And it's really, in some cases, I have people come in and say, I wanna start a business. I've always wanted to open a flower shop. I've always wanted to open a restaurant. And so it's the kind of counseling, you might say, nurturing and guiding, the business plan, get a marketing plan, financial plan. You know, Bob talks to these three other businesses that are kind of state businesses to talk to that don't look into his competition and don't talk to at all. So once they go through that process, we'll see if they open their doors or not. Then you have people who just wanna grow and expand, and they can't find space, or they don't know where to look. You know, you have a database, they have to acknowledge that business owners calling us, landlords calling us, I have this space, I don't have this space, you know, can you help me? And then we also build businesses that are closing, you know? One business just shut the doors the other day, was open for two months. We assume she's finding all of these hassles going on. It's like, oh my gosh, I didn't know I needed to do that. They didn't know this had to be done. They didn't know whatever. And so a lot of times we help people with closures. You know, we have an auto shop on the corner of Mountain, Murphy's Grade in 49, you know, perfect, perfect thing on a closure. We had a fitness center downtown just now that was gonna close. Perfect idea to come in and retool yourself, reopen differently, look at things differently. And here she is today reopening, has a new, new kind of business, she might see it June first. So those are things we do, and sometimes it's hard to put your finger on it. Sometimes I can't go and tell you all the names of who these people are, whether it's confidentiality, or because there's just so many, it's hard to put it, hard to, hard to put it in paper and call it black and white. But I will tell you, in the last few years, projects at DAC have been instrumental, whether it's helping them purchase the business, grow the business, find a location. We've had Angels Sewer Dream looking for a place to grow. Signal Service, mentioned several years ago. Cal Lumber, their purchase of Sardines. First American, moved from downtown to where they are today. Blooms and Things, closing once, opening here, going again. Great location now. Um, Angels Auto, Angels In, Travel Lodge, Calveras Cycle, Matt Kelpport, Spin Cycle, London Map, haven't had a London Map in a long, long time. Smoke Shop, Hughes gonna close during COVID. The city almost shut him down because of all the complaints that remained. We found a way to help him stay open, and was able to stay open, and here he is now, looking for a better, better location. Unless he changes his mind in the last 30 days. Shero Ninja, Gold Rush Tours, they're putting on anywhere in Calaveras County, they can get Angels Camp. True Thirst, Deo Espresso, including buying a building. B Auto, B Night, Bigfoot Porch, Cowalwood, other seven that they're closing, but the buildings are reconnected. Lumentary. So those are just a few, as we look up and down Highway 49 that are the most visible, visible. Then we'll talk about all of these folks I just mentioned don't really live here in Angels Camp. They live outside the city limits. 75% of our business owners do not live in Angels Camp. Now think about that for a minute. So we do these employee surveys to find out about where you live, where to play. We come to find out 75% of our business owners here in Camp do not live in Angels Camp. Then we look at corporate, you know, drop the supply, Dollar General. Probably the funnest project, and sadly they're not here, is a company called Roast Room. They, they were light industrial, they looked in the county, they felt twice in the county, they came back to the city, they measured, came to the city, um, ended up buying property in city limits, out where he's very good. Five acres. And then when they went through their due diligence and trying to make that piece of property work, what needed to work was $1.7 million in earthwork. And that didn't pencil out. COVID hit, didn't pencil out, they needed to buy a ready-made building by this point. 30 employees, they were brought to our community. So people say, where do people come from? And I always say, it's a small world. People can spend all the money outside of Angels Camp, Calaveras County. So this man has a second home that he frequents every weekend, Big Creek Village. He's lived there for 25 years on weekends. He lives in San Cruz. That's how he started his business. Business is very successful. He's tired of San Cruz, he's tired of the politics, he's tired of the government regulations, he's tired of the fees, and he said to his employee group, just, why do we stay here? We can go like anywhere. And so they chose Angels Camp because he drove by through Angels Camp for 25 years going through some of Big Creek Village. Looked in the county, was not successful, grew up in Angels Camp, purchased the land, still wants it, looking for something to do with it. But in the end, as we helped him purchase, or worked through that process, working through the planning commission process, working with the union, said his plan got approved, conditional he's committing everything, worked with the neighborhood, because nobody wants light industrial in their backyard, but worked with the neighborhood, did all the community outreach, did the community meetings for him, conducted the planning commission, there wasn't anybody who was advocating against it. And it was approved by the planning commission. You know, when they was giving development costs, you give all of the people, it was $1.7 million in living in spirits every day. When originally they bought it, it was estimated $700,000. So they had to relocate. And San Andreas Airport, old airport, is the lucky one, because they're out there just spending millions of dollars on those buildings that's in the mud. And that will be a very nice light industrial park for San Andreas. So I'm saddened by that, but I'm happy because I do find where, you know, working with Calaveras County, there's room for all of us. We need about, just about every kind of industry possible, every kind of store, and I had a couple today who came in because the third component of all this is tourism. I get people who come into the office all the time, get a seat assigned, just somebody who's paying them to our direction. They live in Minne, Nevada, they were in Alameda for a week, they were camping out at the fairgrounds. And they say to me, what's this rock dump about? So we go through the rock dump. And then they say, well, how did you guys survive during COVID? And I said, actually, we were very fortunate, because most of our businesses are essential. Most everything we have in here in town, we found a way to make it essential. And I love the Jim Turner story, because most people in that name, free bikes and boots are essential. But one thing nobody, most nobody knew about, is that the Turners repair boots. And so because of that, and the workers needing boots in fire season right around the corner, Jim Turner was able to stay open, so he could repair the boots, receive the boots, et cetera. Now, whether he went and bought a pair of jeans along the way is another story, but he was able to stay open. And that's how we worked with over 100 businesses up and down Main Street to find ways to stay open during COVID, because it was horrible. And I remember talking with the city attorney on a couple of those, because the clients come in and you find a way to help that business stay open legally, but we would also provide a lot of education about what to do, what to do, here's some of the equipment, here's this, we develop policies, so they would have their HR policies in place, you know, OSHA come in, this is what you're doing, you wanna record temperatures, whatever it was, we were helping those businesses, because nobody else could, and we partnered with the county, did the same thing with the public health, all of that. So those are things where, yes, there's been a shift in the last two years, and it's maybe part of the ten points what it is, but I think we have to look back to COVID, because that shook everybody up. That shook everybody up. And now I'm finding post-COVID, our businesses are suffering more than they did during COVID. Because now they're dealing with a whole gang where open, wide open, and the expectation is to provide this level of service, and people can't find employees, and the minimum wage went up, inflation factor is up, and is our economy gonna crash or not? You know, do I grow my business? What do I do now? So it's, it's turning times for a lot of our small businesses. So I'm hopeful as we pursue this, and I appreciate the opportunity to meet with, for DAC and discuss some of the retooling of how we move forward and what we can do, but I wanna assure you that city council has always been invited at the table. There's been times for whatever reason, somebody has not been there. But that invite has always been there.
Oh yeah, 'cause I didn't, I wasn't leaving a comment that you weren't, when I'm saying that the city chose not to attend on committee inclusion, specifically planning was told not to attend.
Planning, it was very expensive.
Not by DAC.
No, it was very expensive, and that's why Gary Gordon serves as the planning commissioner. Nobody has to pay him. Whether that's the appropriate person or not, if he does, I'd protect the planning commissioner. So, anyway, I just look forward to moving forward. I look forward to working together in a continued public-private partnership and look forward to seeing the direction that the council is, where we go next. Thank you. Are there any questions at all, or?
That's what I was gonna hit you. Any questions, council staff?
I have two questions. Uh huh. Debbie, what other sources of funding does DAC have, other than the police?
So there's a couple organizations that pay for office space that, uh, AFA, the actual cemetery pays for storage there at DAC, so they're supplying machines, and they have a conference, use the Mopar through them once a month. Currently, AFA is paying DAC $400, $500 a month to be able to maintain their part of keeping the office open and answering the questions when they come in, because they're maybe more AFA-related than DAC-related. Uh, we have the Murphy's Grade Road side dock project in their place, do their entire DAC to do the community outreach and reach out to the properties. to do the community outreach and reach out to the properties. And we did that all up and down Highway 49, and all the curb gutter sidewalk projects. When the Tahoe Group Design did the north side of town, and looking at curb gutter sidewalks, we really came to the outreach, and they paid us for our efforts to do the community outreach. So those are a few of them.
Membership.
And Lori's letter.
Doesn't just pay, doesn't just pay a membership.
On the other.
Maybe that's why, in Lori's letter, it implied that we weren't fully funding you. So yeah, I think that's the one.
No, you, the, to my knowledge, the city has never fully funded DAC. The, the city has contributed, in the beginning of the years, there were some grants that were received, and through those grants, that helped fund DAC. That was in the Michael Manhattan era of administrator, I don't know all the ins and outs of those projects. When I come on board, the board drastically reduced the amount of money, and we were told prove ourselves. And so I think we did that the next year, funding levels were at about anywhere from $55,000 to $7,000 to $8,000. Depending, $55,000 is always considered a base for this general economic development. Businesses coming in, the retention, improvement, et cetera. And then other projects were added on. So DAC received extra monies for the outreach and tax, tax, tax outreach.
But then the business membership, what does that look like, what is that?
Advisory council are business owners in town, and they pay anywhere from $1,000 to $10,000. And that's an annual contribution they make for a 501(c)(6). And with that contribution, they, they're on the advisory council. And not everybody on the advisory council, which is including the faculty, is served on the board.
Not everybody serves on the board.
No, so, well, advisory council is supposed to thirty different businesses, unfortunately. And then, so, usually when we have an opening, the first group that people ask to serve on the board are the advisory council. And we try to make our board very industry-specific, so everybody at the seat brings a particular industry to the table. So we're not lock-sided on one industry every night.
And then I have another question. The, the increase that you're requesting to $75,000, just curious how, how you arrived at that number?
So we look at, you know, going forward in this next year, and we're finding that, you know, with the city gates and whatever strategic planning that comes out of that, may require more of our time participating. They look at, you know, just in general, where our expenses are going up, like everybody else. So we're seeing the increases as well. So that, in general, that was, I mean, there's probably a few more items to that, but off the top of my head is what I recall.
So is that an increase in time that the best covering, as in your time?
I think I'm confused. A little bit of both, I mean, it may change the direction of my time to be more specific to this related project, or, or whatever it might be. So in turn, I might hire someone to cover the office. So pretty much, the office is open ten to three. I try to make every effort to be there, I don't take a lunch, we're open ten to three. Because a lot of businesses on their lunch hour like to come in, and I can range from eleven to one. So I try to be there, but I do work at eight hours a day, give or take an hour. And I use my mornings to like pick up the mail and do whatever, and I use my afternoons to do site visits if someone's asking me to come to their business. Because during the daytime, it's hard for people to come perhaps to the office, or I'll be done early in the morning, or late at night, or on a weekend. It floods my time to meet the demands of people needing to come in and talk to me that, you know, they, they may be working and not able to come in, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, and I, I'm not going to throw, they're rough numbers. We gave like a, not gave, we, there was a base pay, like when we had TOT tax in the past, and you did outreach on the water sewer, those are kind of, if we didn't know they were, or PSS, nobody knew PSS was coming. We all acquired it kind of on the side, too. So as a, as a budget, then.
So then we discussed the service, and that came from previous councils. There's a wish list of things that they wanted to accomplish, for whatever reason, and got flushed out within council, and they said, you know, we need someone to act as a public information researcher. We need someone to, you know, at, at one point, they wanted to do a few reviews that went out to business community residents, et cetera. You know, there's different versions of the Facebook page. When I came on board, I was seeing cities do a City of Angels Facebook page, government operation, et cetera. When I asked the city about it, I was told there were still some legal concerns about what you couldn't and not do as a city entity on Facebook. So in the Ann Forrest days, when Facebook was up and coming, and websites, they were saving anything related to Angels Camp. Have fun in Angels Camp, visit Angels Camp, live, work and play Angels Camp. And so the contractor at the time went to Facebook and created some Angels Camp pages, Angels Camp CA, and Angels Camp California. Well, those two separate sites, at the time when I came on board, they were being ran by different people, but no one was posting. And so we asked about Angels Camp California, because it was more in tune with Angels Camp. And this is when there wasn't a visit Angels Camp, there, there's just nothing, you know, just our Facebook page, AC's Facebook page, I don't think the museum had a Facebook account. And so that's when we contacted, we ended up being a local guy, and we asked him if we could take over the Angels Camp California, the administrator, that's when Jessica Johnson was in that side. So the two are shared that, and basically started sharing the information and growing the page to what you have today. So when Rebecca is starting the City of Angels page, there was a little disconnect with that, because when Jessica worked for the city, she could do more posting and job announcements and those kinds of things. And when she left the city, there was another employee who came on, and I could create something in order for someone to post, I don't understand at all. Didn't even know about any of that, because it's all behind scenes. So anyway, now we have the City of Angels Camp page, we have this Angels Camp California page, and it's like we have two new pages now, like visit Angels Camp, visit this, whatever. So we're just trying to figure out what's the best option to go. But when you cancel a page, you lose those followers. They don't transfer to any page.
Like a mail, like a mail order.
You have to tell people, so you have to tell them to please share a good news page, and you know, help people follow instructions. In the city organization page, it's more of a following page. So people can't post to that page, only the administrator, whoever's in control of it. So that is truly a governmental page, you're going to post agendas and city council meetings and that sort of thing. You're not going to be a social page and saying, you know, whatever. Come, come to the junior project, or just talk to everything. So it's just really important, you know, there is a difference. And a lot of, when all of this started in 2008 and all this branding, you know, the idea behind branding was that we don't want to be all these silos. We're too small to just have a city and a visitor image and ban it, on and on and on. So through branding and a lot of community input, it was decided that it needs to be all one unit. And with one unit, we kind of have, you know, a logo and maybe a trademark that we all use, and we all use it, not less. And so it's really never taken off, really, like it was intended in my opinion. Because we didn't have a lot of money to change things over. So in some cases, city departments maintain their logo, or maintain their own identity, or whatever it was. So, you know, going forward, I understand we need for a logo that's unified and all of those things. So I think it's doable, but that's kind of what's happened through the years. And everything was so new that everybody was trying to save. Like, when I started, there were thirty-eight Google names tied to DAC. So that we didn't lose the live in Angels Camp, work in Angels Camp, live, work in Angels Camp, how fun in Angels Camp, all of these kinds of things. So over time, I just let them go. Because if we haven't developed it in five, 10 years, you know, we'll start over and find a, probably a better name or another way, because we're just, that'd be, just too much. But at the time, that's what everybody was trying to do, is save it so we could use it. Anyway, so that's the scope of service, and that could change, too. I just bring that forward, because that's, that's been kind of a direction of past councils and administration on things to do. And post-COVID, we may find that we don't want to do those things. Or new administration, who want to take a different route. Or there's more people at house now that could do those things. That's why it was brought there. So it's not in stone, but it's just something that they've discussed in the past. Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions, council staff? Anyone?
I don't know if anybody from DAC.
Anybody online?
Anybody online, public comment for DAC?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, Tim, thank you too, you guys, kind of what? All right, next we want to see consideration of resolution number 22-21, declaring the intention of continuing assembly for fiscal year 2223, preliminary approving engineering report and providing notice of the hearing on July 19, 2022, for the landscape and lighting district number one, Green Rock Creek, Carol Tonker to SCI Consulting Group. Actually, let's do this for, for one second, before we do this. Can we take a short break? Five minutes. So it is seven, we're one in the top, is what I'm saying? So let's reconvene 7:51. And next we'll go with item C, which I'm not going to read.
That.
Yeah.
Sorry, not Neeland.
The volume I want on the TV, not on the.
Oh, do you want? So you got 73, 74, 75?
Rebecca Neeland, say something.
Hello?
She's still coming from here.
Still three-year live.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out. Don't worry, sir.
Okay, Ms. Rebecca, you're up. And if any members in the public wanted to be closer, City Council does. We can all huddle around rows if we need to.
You can on that side if you guys want to.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody here. Rebecca Neeland, the acting city engineer. And I was tasked with making the management. With solving the 26-year-old issues that they had. Many members of the actually, I believe, all the members of council who attended tonight witnessed my two presentations last year where I brought up the original problem and discussed solutions for the options for moving forward. And it really involved a very large community outreach campaign, working with the community this year to help find solutions that would work with them. Rose, do you have another presentation?
I have to give you one second here.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'll. So I'm going to do. I'm going to tell you what we've been through this last year, the process that we went through and the resolution that we've come to. And then I'll hand it back off to SCI to talk about the two resolutions that are on the SEI's agenda. And I apologize for the mess in the picture. That is not something that. Oh, yeah, absolutely. We can speed this up. Okay. Okay. So next slide. All right. So the purpose of my discussion tonight is just to let you know where we began, walk you through the outreach work that we did, what we accomplished, and then what the next steps in the process are. Next slide. So where the LLD was a year ago, the scope of work was very big. The LLD was under budgeted, and I've discovered it's really due to two reasons. One of them is, you know, on your own property tax bill, everybody gets a 2% increase on property tax every year. The LLD assessment was $300, 22 years ago. And so there's been no annual 2% escalation. If there had been a 2% escalation, we wouldn't be here. We would be right at the number we need to be. And then the second items was months just weren't handled appropriately. And that's because of a lot of vagueness in what the LLD was supposed to do and where. The infrastructure is 26 years old, and it's all showing its age, and it needs quite a makeover. Throughout the year, scope was added without changing the assessment, which is what we're going through this evening and over the course of the next month. And residents were upset that the city staff wasn't really able to help them. So I apologize for the type on this slide. But in spring of 2021, the council approved the staff to work with the community to find some solutions. All right, next slide. So this is actually one of my first slides from my first community presentation. And it was fantastic because we've accomplished all of these goals. And so I started with, we don't have the answers. In the 26 years of the LLD, nobody's had the answers. And moving forward, we're going to find solutions to those, and document resolutions, and we're going to make sure every resident has access to that. A lot of residents have no idea what the LLD is or does or what's possible. Next slide. All right. So the community outreach. We had the plan for folks' needs, clarify the community's expectations, develop a detailed inventory, the items the community wants the LLD to maintain, assess that inventory and identify maintenance needs, cost estimate the maintenance work, develop a 20-year cost estimate with replacement costs. And that replacement cost is a really important piece of the equation. And then present the whole community with options, take feedback, and refine it. And this again, that was one of my original slides. And we've gone through all of those steps. So it was wonderful to go back and see the deliver what we said we were going to do. So one of the first steps was to create a website for that LLD. And we created it, and we posted all of the history, years, what resolutions, what happened when, what the assessment levels were for all the years. And that was our first website. And then next slide. Our second website is the site that we set up for all of the ongoing outreach that had links to our community meetings, before we posted the recordings of our previous meetings to get anybody messed up in any of our ongoing outreach activities. And then did create captured a domain name that, if you hear everybody to recognize and type in, greenhorncreeklld.com. So that's a registered domain for that community now. So moving forward, they'll have that website where they can always go to, refer, refer to things and find these documents. And people won't be in the dark the way that they were before. All right, next slide. So we had four hard copy postcards. I forgot about one of them. The first one was inviting everybody to a large community meeting. And the second one was immediately canceling the large in-person community meeting because of COVID. But the important thing about these four series of postcards is they were mailed to every single parcel owner with the name Greenhorn Creek. And you can see on the second postcard, you know, the heading of it is, please join the conversation to help decide the future of the LLD. And a later one is your annual assessment needs change. So I've been trying to get this great vibrant catching people's attention. And people wanted to participate. Now, they've been notified three times. And you'll notice on all the postcards, my first, my work email address. So people have always had a way to get on with me. All right, next slide. So the community outreach process, we had nine. I called with a couple of the meeting because of issues with COVID. We couldn't have large in-person meetings. But there's a lot of people, you know, when you have these online meetings, a lot of people don't talk, you don't really get to interact with people. And so the online meetings were useful, and then recorded. So that information is online. And then it all goes up the next day. Sorry, online meetings will be on Wednesday night. And then the next day, 12:30 to 3 o'clock. We would be out at Greenhorn setup, and it was just come, go, and ask your question. And those two meetings worked really well together. So we had nine of those at three Saturday community sidewalks, where somebody started, they said, Rebecca, I look at your maps. I don't know why I'm looking at it. You know, I think I'm reading them out. I said, sure, let's walk through the community. And I will point out all the resources for you. So those sidewalks were absolutely fantastic. I'll have to thank the person that asked for that because that generated a lot of excitement about the infrastructure that we were working today. We had two online surveys. The first one was just to generate interest and see what people's concerns were about the district. And the second one was asking them about which optional infrastructure did they want to include into the this next engineers report. For that one, we got 163 responses, which is an excellent percentage. Getting up there is 547 individual lots out there. We formed, at the community sidewalks, we formed a disrobert conservation team. And they have taken off on their own. I can't keep up with them. They've done some amazing work as well, purely as volunteers for the residents out there. We have an LLD ambassadors group, and they're out in the community helping to spread the word about what we're doing. So it's not just me now, it's spread, and I have folks helping me. And then we have, they have a community what's out, what's app page. And I posted to that a couple of times. That has generated some different interest. Altogether, our community email list has 194 emails. And when I mentioned that to SCI, they did believe me that I have 194. That was just phenomenal for people to capture their attention and to be involved in the process. Next slide, please. Oh, and then our last event is coming up, actually. I have banners I'm going to go and post it out on next to Gateway Park. I think I have two bars. And then the banner will look like this, about 60 wide. And it's going to announce our next community meeting, which is held at Camps Restaurant, Portisants, on Tuesday, the 31st. And that is, again, just trying to get absolutely everybody who wants to be involved, who is interested, make sure everybody knows. Next slide. Next slide, please, Rose. Rose, can you move it to the next slide, please?
I did. Are you not seeing it?
Oh. It's in progress. Kyle, are you still seeing the sign? Are you seeing the map? Your music. Oh, there we go. So I just want to show you what we've accomplished. This is the map that we started with. This was in last year's engineers report. And you can see the difference. If you may dance to the next slide, please. That simple map has turned into these maps. And, you know, sort of a heck of a lot more detail on these maps. All of the little pieces of infrastructure are labeled. There are 52 different high-intensity landscape areas that are labeled. Now we know where footage, and we can go to the map and say, this is, you know, this spot. Before, people would say, oh, you're supposed to be doing landscaping on Point Drive. We're on Point Drive. So now we know exactly where it is, where is the whole responsible for things. And all three of these maps are now in the new engineers report. So a tremendous amount of clarity. And for future reference for everybody, information on these maps. Next slide, please, Rose. All right. And so the detail on those maps, all of that labeling is now being translated into the engineers report. And this is a fifth piece that was missing before. You know, when I first had issues with the LLD, I would open the engineers report, and it would be a two-cent paragraph saying that we maintain size. Well, what size? Where is the size? And now for the infrastructure that we maintain, the engineers report has a very detailed table saying what the infrastructure is, what the square footage of the infrastructure is, how does it relate to some of the other features that are out there? Is it a wildlife board? Or are those kinds of things? So this amount of clarity is just phenomenal compared to last official report. Next slide. So then we've taken all of that detail. And this is the 20-year estimate. I don't expect anybody to be able to read it. Most people don't like numbers, but each of these colored bars, the blue, the orange, the purple, they all relate to a whole spreadsheet. This is just the summary of that spreadsheet. And that tells you the level of detail that is put into the estimate to back it up and to defend it and help everybody understand what it does exactly. Next slide, please. So the last slide was the summary of the cost estimate. And this slide shows what some of those individual tables look like. So for example, there's wildlife board, or we're saying we're going to walk through the corridor, each corridor, meaning each quarter. And we'll have one hour for this person and then two hours over here. It really shows how often we expect these areas to be maintained, what level we expect them to be maintained. And these were shared with the community, and I got lots of feedback on these spreadsheets. Next slide. One thing I did mention, and my email was there. My email has been circulating throughout the community. I received hundreds of emails and phone calls from the community. And they have all made this product, this what we're doing so much better. And in fact, I've just done this on my own. So all of the people's comments came in and they said, hey, we have a dog park, and should we paint the streetlights? And I don't appreciate painting the streetlights. So all of those questions that I put together in the second survey that went out to the community, and it was, you want a dog park? And it was, you know, lots of questions of all these optional features that I was just trying to figure out, does the community, is this infrastructure you want to maintain? Or is it something we don't want the LLD to maintain? And some of the survey responses came back very clear. This first slide shows whether or not we should continue to maintain the streetlight. And a couple of people thought, let's just stop. Why do they, they're not very useful lights? Let's just turn them off. Let's stop putting money into it. And when I put that out as a survey question, 88% of the people who took the survey said absolutely maintaining the streetlights. So that's a clear, easy, yes, this is part of what the LLD does. And then the next slide. And a couple of the questions came up where it was a 50-50 split. See, this one is, I can't remember the person. I think it was 65 to 62. Yes and no. So now this is an item we did include in the budget to make sure we have budget for. It's just only about 218 ones. But we, these are items we'll take it back to the community and we'll keep working on these items and fight compromise on the solutions to these particular pieces of infrastructure. Next slide, please. So that brings us to this year's annual engineers, engineers report. And I don't know if you've read it or not, but it is a rigorous legal document. Or it is a document, a legal document. It is not exactly a handbook to say, this is what the LLD does. It does feel, it needs to be very specific. It can't go into, into the helpfulness of what the LLD does. But it is a much better document this year. But there is a very legal, or we're here as legal requirements for what the LLD can and can't do. As I said, people are asking for dog parks, all this stuff. You know, those things needed to be legally, legal for an LLD to pay for those items. The way that the engineers report works is that each house has, is a rented unit. A single parcel is a single family equivalent S and B. One of the changes that we discovered this year with 218 is when the LLD was really established, the rules for these assessment districts were different. And today, Prop 218 has some different rules on how vacant parcels are assessed. And so before vacant parcels got the same assessment that an occupied parcel got. But now vacant parcels get a reduced percentage of assessments. And what that has done is it basically said, okay, well, all of these costs used to be paid for by 621 assess members, and now it's going to be 532. So it's the same costs that are being carried by less parcels. So that was a big change to the whole LLD setup this year. Our old assessments, so from 2020 until 2022, it's been a consistent $300 per single S and B per year. Now, with all the work that we've done and going through and figuring out all the cost estimates, the new estimate is going to be $650 per S and B for the first five years. And that is $50 more than it should be. But that is to catch up a lot of these discrepancies. And then after the first five years, it's going to drop to $595 per S and B that it will have a cost of living index added to it every year. So we're not going to be back in the same spot that we are now. Next slide, please. So our next step, after all of that great work, the engineers report is, there's a resolution for incident to approve the preliminary engineers report. And there's still an opportunity for my comments to come in to adjust that report. And I've given this report to all of the residents, or everybody on my email list, and I've updated our website to have, at the very top of it is my survey question. Is, do you have comments on the engineers report? So we were giving people a good, easy way to provide their comments to us. And then the second resolution now is to authorize the ballot. So with that, SCI will mail a ballot to every property owner. And that ballot will have just two options, the yes option and a no option. And then those will be on the street for 45 days. People have 45 days to turn them back, mail them back in. And now the city council meeting in July, those will all be counted, and we'll figure out whether or not this was a successful reassessment or this fail. Next slide, please. Are you to do your answers?
Yeah, are you not seeing?
Well, I know it's on, so I can speak to it. Okay.
Yeah.
The next slide. There we go. Is, this is too small for you to see, but what I would like everybody to get from this is there are lots of rooms. So if the 218 vote passes, we have budget to do all the things that the LLD should be doing all along. We will, as I said before, we're going to continue to refine some of those optional items that were too close to call based on the survey. optional items that were too close to call based on the survey that we sent out. We are going to continue to refine opportunities for cost savings. We continue, we're finding all kinds of things. Grass areas, the grass pretty much, forming formal landscaping lawn, I had no idea, that stuff is so expensive. It's a dollar sixty a square foot to maintain, whereas our formal landscaping planters is a really pretty thing, those are like only 85 cents a square foot to maintain. So grass costs as much as formal landscaping planters. So if we convert lawn areas to formal landscaping planters, they'll look very nice, then they'll cost half as much. So we're finding all these opportunities for cost savings for residents. We're going to establish an LLP advisory committee to be a fiscal or systemic mechanism. And that's a piece that has been missing from this from along for a long time. LLDs are not like HOAs, they don't have a board where people can come monthly and give their feedback to the people that manage the HOA. That's just not how an LLP works. But I think that is a failure of why this particular LLP has been unsuccessful, is we haven't had residents that are monitoring the financial success. So these are not, it's not a group that's getting involved in the operations of the LLP, just a group that's going to make sure that the budgets are on track, overspending is not occurring, things are being spent correctly, those kind of activities. We're going to procure a fresh services contract, landscaping contract has expired and that needs to be repurposed. And we also need to procure a management contract. That is another piece of this district that has been missing for a long time. Kind of if city staff have time, nobody ever has enough time to focus on it. So the new LLP will have a management committee so that it can save frontline damage. We're going to continue to address that deferred maintenance and then down there. And a really important piece is we're going to need this as a budget annually to make sure, to determine if the assessment level is still appropriate or if it needs to be reduced for the following year. So 650 is a big number, even 600 is a big number. And if these are overestimates, or if, you know, we have all these infrastructure replacement costs in there, maybe we don't need to replace the infrastructure as frequently as estimated and maybe there's opportunities to reduce assessments in the future. So that's another piece of work for the advisory committee. Alright, so that's, if the 218 vote passes, that is a very positive future for this district. Now the next slide please Rose. If the 218 does not pass, so what we're, well, we'll have to do is go back to the community and say, alright, well, there's an Army Corps 404 department that was, the original purpose of the LLP, that means those resources need to be protected in perpetuity. So if money gets spent, the priority goes to the 404 resource areas first. And then if there's money left over, then we can decide which of the optional items we're going to fund. You'll see that on here, I've had to reduce the landscaping cost in the first year to $38,000. Right now landscaping costs us about $120,000 a year. So if the 218 is not, if this is a no vote, which is a possibility, we'll have to reduce landscaping costs dramatically and everything that's done recently. Alright, next slide. And I did just want to have a shout out to all the local residents that have volunteered their time to help with this process. We have a wonderful historical, our historical team that is, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the Selkirk chimney sites, but if you've been out there, the fences are falling apart, the rails are all hanging on the ground. And you can see from the photo here, they're rebuilding the fences and they've actually built a fence frame, the Selkirk chimney. So any visitors to that site, yep, can see how big that house was to hold five adults, pretty incredible. A resident has to go, a lot of time to put together a trail map that talks about all the different resources, the cultural, historic, fine art things that are out in the community that most people walk by and never realize were there. So it's a fantastic map. And then another group has put together, redone the pamphlet that the tribe wants distributed annually to tell all the residents, you know, what have resources, what are these protected cultural areas, why are these protected? And so some people have done a beautiful job and recreated that. So these are all things that residents have done that have saved all of the other LLP members that significantly went there. So huge thanks to them for reducing those kind of future, or those deferred maintenance costs, kind of catch up costs. So thank you to everybody on that group. And then the last slide is any questions?
Thank you Rebecca. Council questions, staff questions?
If it could manage the board. So the presentation had combined C and D.
That's what I say, yes.
So what I would suggest is that probably should separate votes online for purposes of soliciting a public opinion and add a council comment.
Right.
That we combine those items.
So we want to combine C and D?
For purposes of public comments and council.
Yep.
But understanding that we need to still have separate votes.
Separate votes, okay. So, I got you. Okay, council questions? Staff questions? I'll open it up to.
Do you want to do online first?
Do online first.
So I've got Wes is first and then, does Kyle need to speak first? Kyle, do you need to?
No, you can go ahead with public comment.
Okay, so Wes is going to be first and then Richard will go next. But I've got him, you guys until you guys are done.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I didn't, as Mayor O'Leary, and remember the council, my name is Wes Call. I currently live in Mesa, a longtime former resident of Greenport Creek. I still own property in Greenport Creek. In the LLP district, I can give you my assessed parcel number or the lock number if necessary.
That's honest.
And I'm not sure if I want to speak to, I have seven point C or seven point D. My, my question deals, there's three different engineering work exhibits. And my question and concerns lie within the second and third version. So would it be better addressed under, under item 17?
So, so just so we're all clear and on the same page, currently for public discussion is items 7C and 7D. So you can speak to any of those items at this point.
Okay, well, okay, let me, let me begin again by saying all three versions of the report are excellent. John Bliss at SDI did an excellent job. And myself as a former member of the city council, I think one of the best things we ever did in terms of the LLP is to hire John Bliss at his company. They're absolute professionals, they do a thorough job, they get what you're talking about. And as I'm reading through the second and third version, I have no problem with his analysis and his rationale for direct assessments, indirect benefit, indirect benefit. All of that is perfectly fine. But on page 30, what he talks about calculating the single family equivalents for non-residential properties, there's a paragraph called other property types. He lists three types, the golf course, Fairwood and Green, the business tennis basketball school, properties in the clubhouse, card store properties. And in each one of those, he goes through a mathematical exercise to come up with the average number of golfers at any time, or the average number of users at sports courts or average golfers in the clubhouse. That analysis, again, I had no problem with. But what I do have trouble with is what he has failed to consider. And that is the additional land uses of the bar and restaurant facility, mainly the majority of that clubhouse structure, as well as the retail pro shop. There's no discussion about the seating capacity, the restaurant and bar, both indoor dining and outdoor, and what might be the number of patrons that visit that facility. There's no discussion about the retail pro shop, people that go in to buy golf equipment rather than golfing. There's no discussion about the bridal, green common areas that was built in the 90s where it's a special events center for concerts, weddings, charity events, gift gift park, case to Calvares, fundraising operations, private parties, anniversaries, all of those, those use to generate people and there needs to be some actor work in the formulas to address those additional uses, as well as the fireside building. That was built as a special banquet area, conference center for retreats, has meeting room space, destination Angel's Camp used to have their meetings there, the LLP former advisory committee used to have their meetings there.
You have one minute.
And at one time, there was a real estate office in that building and it's still a tip. All of those additional uses generate people and they're not being included in that second or third version of the report. And so I think it's incumbent upon you, the council, to direct your engineer to address those issues. I'm not suggesting what the numbers might be, but they can't be.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Anyway, thank you very much. And if we have any questions, I would be glad to try to respond.
Thanks Wes.
Thanks, Mr. Richard.
Richard?
Yes, hi, this is Richard. I live at 222 Smith Flat Road. I had one question, you mentioned comments. When's the last day you'll accept comments for the report, for the engineers report?
Rebecca? I'm going to, Kyle or John, can you speak?
Right, the 19th.
Yeah, so the final engineers report will be brought back on July 19th, so when the ballots are calculated. So any minor revisions can be made to the report that is submitted for that council at that time. John, do you have any comments on that?
No, that, that seems accurate.
And then I get to Mr. Clum's point. He brought up some good points. The two other areas that I saw really missing, I was surprised was that there was no calculation for the, for the.
Walmart.
Walmart, as you know, is a huge user of facilities here and it's actually increased over time now that it's gone mostly from a timeshare to a hotel, anybody can stay there. There's also the gallery, the new houses next to the golf course that are in there. Those are not calculated into the equation. And then the cottages, the cottages that are off of Selkirk are also not in the calculation. So I guess I was surprised not to see those, because especially the Walmart is a huge number of people, very large number of people that use that facility now. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online with comments for this?
Anybody else want to comment? Online? No.
I have a public comment here. Taking them here, then I will close public comment. And I will bring it back and we will do item C first.
Do I have to reach you first, because I listen? With financial, we do have a.
No, I'm just trying to think if it affects the other council members as well. So how do I get a budget to caution that and you yourself? If you got any other rules.
You can't roll your eyes at me.
For further record, that requires.
Right.
You get to come back after.
Okay.
Set it right now, yeah.
So we're going to have separate questions, right?
Right, so we have C, which approving the engineers report, providing notice appearing on July 19th.
C is approving a resolution 21, 22, I mean 22, 21.
21, approving engineers report and providing notice appearing on July 19th, correct? Okay. So I would look for a motion, considering the resolution of 22 dash 21, approving engineers report and providing notice appearing on July 19th, 2022. I will make that motion. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same time? Three, one, one. Three zero, three zero two.
Three.
Three zero, two, zero, one, one.
Two zero.
You got it Rose, alright. Right. Alright, so next we move on to item D, adopt a resolution 2222. Replacing the existing LLP, right, with resolution 2223, adopt the proposition of 218 assessment valid procedure. How is that?
I will make that motion and I will second that motion.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody disapprove, same time?
Do you get it, Gretel?
Yes, I'll grab it.
Thank you Rebecca, thank you Kyle.
Yeah, thank you guys. Good job Rebecca, thank you John.
Before Rebecca leaves. Hey, are you still there Rebecca? I just want to say thank you, you guys do an awesome job. This is 20 plus years of cleaning up stuff on all sorts of aspects, from Army Corps to who's in charge of what. You, Matt, DuBarry, you guys do an awesome job. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Thank you. Okay. Next we're going to discuss item E, discussion of approval of the revised city gate proposal. Rebecca?
Okay, so when we discussed this at 15th meeting, my initial recommendation was to continue in using the city to identify a revised proposal so that we can bring it back to council to move forward with the agreement. So I did have several discussions with Mayor Green of City Gate as well as other staff there. We went over a quick regard to changes in management, changes in council interaction based on the comments that we had at the 15th meeting. And specifically it was, you know, I, I think we're all well aware of what was included in phase one and really that had a lot to do with financial reviews and financial stability and working through the tax initiatives. And so that is all that's taken place at this point. And now at this point, it's acknowledged in the meeting board with an actual strategic plan for the city. And that does mean surveys of council, surveys of staff, surveys of public, I'll read on that, because we want to gain what, you know, we all might have our own ideas of what, you know, our goals should be, your mission, all of that. But it's trying to narrow it down to find that consensus. And so that is the point of phase two. And so I had, when I, when I talked to Andy and the rest of his staff, we went through everything and he said, oh, well, you just really need phase two. By the end of the conversation, I was very clear what council needed. So he got me the proposal and it is $19,000 less than the last proposal that you got because it specifically focuses on conducting the, you know, orientation meeting to, you know, develop that list and information that the city gave me from the city so we can, you know, get organized with what types of interviews we're going to be doing, interviews, community and surveys, also looking at current opportunities and challenges for current fiscal conditions at a very high level. And then a whole day onsite meeting with council and staff. And the thing is, sometimes we can only kind of talk to council and department heads, we all have a view of things and then when they go to talk to actual line staff, we have an entirely different view of things. So it's making sure. So it's making sure we're making that incorporation like that as well. So the project will take about three and a half months to complete. It would start in the next fiscal year, so starting July 5th, roughly. And we're just asking for approval of the contract. So we can move forward on the exciting adventure.
I have a question, is there a Phase 3, or Phase 4, or Phase 5? I mean, like, or Part 3, or do they have any?
No, I mean, generally, once Phase 2 is done, like, that is what we want to hit to. At that point, it's just making sure that outside of Ron, that it's still relevant. So they generally recommend probably looking at strategic plans. Over, over like every five years or so. Just because things can really change. And, you know, in the last couple of years, things have drastically changed. We would have been having different conversations in 2018, 2019, than we are today. So you just, you know, if, if things just went toll, like, money falling from the sky, or completely tie them off the schedule rush. And we may, you know, that may shift.
Should we go back to them for like a little overview, or when they kind of?
We could, we could, we could also incorporate them on council refreshers. So if, you know, if council changes, and, you know, they have all their standing either. I can, you know, present that information while you want to call them and say that.
So when they're doing their gathering of information with regard to all the financials, are they working with Michelle?
They will be working with Michelle and myself. Rams is no longer.
They're phasing out.
They're phasing out, so Michelle.
July will be perfect, right?
So, yeah, so by the way, this is Michelle Gonzalez, our only client. So, yeah, so Michelle met with Rams, and we have, we're cutting over effectively immediately. So we will be just.
You ripped that band-aid straight out, just like that?
Yep. They were fine, they were fine. I had a discussion with Terry when I first started, just to let it out. But they left us in a really good spot. We're in a good spot, we just need to fill the gaps now. So now it's just a matter of Michelle kind of figuring out where they left off. And then how we can make some changes, like, or documenting everything, so it's easier for staff. And then that's going to make it easier for us to get information to, to.
Perfect.
Okay, and then our audio.
Council staff? Okay, I will open it up to anybody in the public, all 3, 4, you left out there.
Any online public? No. I'll second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign? 4, 0, 1.
I have one more question. When we come out, will they be, like, I mean, would you have a discussion with, with, then with Jack, or with Akba?
I mean, we definitely want to have outreach. So, yeah, we're going to get input from Jack, we're going to get.
Anybody that kind of wants to.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, item F, discussion of approval of resolution 22-20, adopting this innovation of resolution service with a non-payment SB 998. Rebecca.
Okay, so the state gave all utility agencies a present in 2018. And it basically said, you can't cut people's water off without going through a law amendment for non-payment. So it narrowed in specifically on residential customers. So commercial customers don't get a rate, but residential customers do. And so mainly, it was, it's a, it's a low, low income, or, you know, under-income basis. And so if you are considered low-income, then all of the utility agencies, Hugueny, and now they've already had this in place. And they've had various programs for funding to kind of fill that gap for low-income widers. Utility just starts watering wastewater, we haven't had programs to do that. So that's what we did. It, it went into, well, it's approved September 28th of 2018. And then the implementation date was February 1st of 2020. Well, what happened in 2020? So at that point, I think it's like, we can't shut anyone's water off anyway. So it's kind of irrelevant, because you can't shut anyone's water off. It doesn't matter if you get a payment plan or not. It doesn't even matter if you're low-income or not. This applied to commercial, residential, you name that, you could not shut the water off. And that was lifted until the end of last year. And so now, we are still kind of caught where we have to jump through hoops in shutting people's water off. Because of the state of rubbish program. And so we have to do that outreach, and we have to reach out, and then we have to offer a payment plan. But it's all kind of in conjunction with SB 998, which the city ever adopted.
Just for low income, though?
Low income.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, so we have to start building our policies around water and wastewater services. And we have four ordinances in all of our policies that have anything to do with water and wastewater. So this is the one that we're mandated to do. And then I will be working through all the other policies that we need to embody. So that it's easier for staff, it's easier for customers to know what they need to do and what, who's responsible and what. But this is probably like the kickoff. This one's mandated. The other ones go to ensure that we are following our great scandals. That staff aren't having to do subjective procedures. Because that's historically been what we need. So what the city has done historically is, okay, you call, you're having a difficult time, you need your bill, or you want to pay your whole bill. And we don't, we don't determine if you're low-income, but staff have allowed payment plans of various terms and sorts over the years. So this is to narrow, you know, to the mandated requirements of SB 998 that all water agencies are required to adopt. And they were required to do that in the latter part of 2019, but we're doing it now. Because this is going to be a common issue, if we don't have something in place. In addition, they made it super simple, so we have to put it in five different languages. Not just English, not just Spanish. And so that, all of that work has already been done. So I just stole it from somewhere, just to change the order. So all that information will be available on our website, it'll be available in City Hall. And then it's just staff now has the framework on how to do outreach with customers. So this allows them to do the payment plan. This also gave tenants more, more rights. So if you are a property owner, landlord, and you have a tenant, and you're, you're collecting the water and wastewater charges as part of the rent. And you, the property owner, don't pay us. And the tenant comes in and says, hey, I, why are you shutting my water off? I've been paying my landlord since 1977. That tenant has the right to become an old customer. And that's for us to navigate. It's not a deal, because then it starts restricting our ability to collect. Because we can't leave anything, that we can't leave the property if the tenant is the customer. So all this is like a collection effort, doesn't it, it's maybe all. So it's, it's not a ideal situation. When I worked with CCWD, who ordered this, went into our facts, we definitely reached out to all of the legislative options that we want. To fix some of the language that was in here, because it's hard to administer. We can't charge late fees, we can't charge interest. You are very limited on your collection capabilities. So it's kind of a, it's, it's well-intended, but it is just a, it's kind of a burden for utilities. But it's something that we have to do, so. We have a lot of customers that haven't paid. We still do. But we can now shut fire.
Council questions?
If anybody else has anything to add to this policy, like, before, before. I mean, aren't you saying?
So how many, have all of them, I mean, City of Desto, Series.
Every single one.
Everyone has to adopt this, no matter what you do, is that a state thing, so.
Every, every single water agency in the state of California has to adopt that.
Okay.
It doesn't matter if you're a, like, a special district, let's say a county, doesn't matter, makes no difference.
Any public comment, online, sitting here?
But if they enter into a payment plan and then breach the agreement, then you can shut them off. Okay, so it's not like forever and ever?
No, but it's.
That's another layer.
Did you get to just?
Yeah, so, so historically, what would happen, and we don't have a policy on this, so that also makes it publicized. But let's say it's dead. So you would have, you would have so much time that, so you would, you would do like a, say, like, right.
Okay.
And then they have so much time to come in and pay their bill. And if they don't pay their bill, then you're going to put a lock on their door. And then, I think it's seven days after that, you would lock the lock. And it won't even turn back on until you pay the bill.
In full.
In full. So when this gets kicked in, and you're low-income, then it says, well, I have to offer you a payment plan.
Before you shut them off?
Before I shut them off.
Yeah.
And, and we have to reach out to them. So entering to a payment plan, they can be up to 12 months. They have to remain current on their current bill. And so it's only the delinquent portion that would be incorporated in the payment plan. And then they have to pay on the payment plan and the current bill. So if they fail and go to link on current bill, they can be locked off. If they fail the payment plan, they can be locked off. However, that whole process of seven days, it gets extended. So part of this law was to extend it beyond the common seven days that you need. So this can go on for like 30 days, 45 days. So it, it can go on a really long time, so.
And these people have to previously established that they're low-income? They can't just say, oh, I'm low-income?
So we, so we would have to get, like, so historically, what I got with CCWD was a letter from the Resource Connection.
Yeah.
A girlfriend to Gigi that shows they're on the care program. You know, something has to actually formally show that they are.
They're getting service from somebody. And then what about, what about a hardship? Like, maybe not low-income, but lost my job, or you had medical. So it's not like for hardship?
No, so that would be more policymaking, because the city wants to do our policies. But that sort of stuff needs to be incorporated in there. What, what we had with CCWD, in terms of hardship, we weren't very forgiving. So generally, if, if you had substantial loss on your property because of a fire, or a leak, or something that made the property uncapable. You suspend your service, and then you wouldn't have to pay if, if the property functioned and you had water. Those types of things. But if it was just a matter of, you know, things aren't working, there was no, no allowance for that. Other agencies, I've seen where they are a little bit more forgiving, and they will do payment plans not for low-income. We have allowed payment plans for anybody, regardless of income, but it's just not like a, like a.
I have one more thing that I guess, so this is now going to be tied to the property owner, not the tenant, right?
It is, but it is. A tenant says, I want to be my own customer. And they can prove that it's not just, you know, there has to be some semblance of proof as to why you're asking to be your own customer.
Right, but right now, tenants are their customers, City of Angels, so how are you going to flip that?
Well, they can be, but only because the property owner signed a certain, like a.
A waiver, okay.
It says, I am going to, I want my tenant on the bill, but I still understand, and you're.
Okay.
Any online comments or public comments for this item?
Okay, I will look for a motion to approve resolution 22-20, incorporating SB 998 in the city's water policy.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign? No.
That's what other council sets, like, if you need to.
Maybe it's more like that?
Okay, G, approval of resolution 22-19, approving the MOU negotiations between City of Angels exempt employees and the City of Angels long-term. Beginning May 22nd, 2022, through June 30th, 2024.
So this has been going on since before I started. So basically, it's, the original MOU is from what, 2012? Yeah, and so it's just been sitting there. And so there was a lot of negotiation going on with the exempt unit, and what made sense. And there was also some corporations in terms of what across the comp study day. And various, taking various things that had historically been in employment contracts, and moving them to the MOU, and so forth. Just to try to make it cleaner and easier going forward as you have contracted exempt employees. So several discussions have occurred on this, and.
Council questions?
Why, why is it starting in a few days, is that the next week or year? Why'd me 22nd, why not? I guess that was my stupid question.
Scott questions? Open the public comment online in house?
Any public comment online?
Can I come up and, yeah?
You're public.
All right.
No online.
Are you Scott, or are you public?
First of all, apologies arose, and this is some, one of the things in the contract that we went back and forth, and I had to have stuff added. And it's, Doug, you're going to probably need to take a look at this. Section 11 has to do with the Pers and PREPA. There was nothing in there initially about public safety, because public safety Pers is different than. Regular, this lady's staff or whoever. We went back and forth, got something put in there, and then looking at Pers rules, where I said that I'm fine, but looking at how that reads. I just wanted something in comment or confirmed here in council on my understanding of the purpose that's in there. So it's mentioned hired before whatever date, 2013, for classic members. I was hired on in 2018 as a classic member because I'm a Pers.
Oh, that's totally fine. So what they mean by that is hired after January 1st of 2013 into, is like.
As a new Pers. Okay, more than six months.
Or the six class.
Yeah.
So, so if you, so where you came from, you at first, right? If you had taken a break.
A break, service of six months.
Over six months, and then you came here, you would be considered a member. But going from a Pers entity, or even a reciprocating agency, so, so like, I think Sam Joachim has a, it's not Pers, it's something else.
19.
Yeah, I figured what the number is. It's a number.
It's a year?
It's a year.
Performance.
Series 10.
So it's a reciprocating agency, so it, and helpers have a whole list, you can look it up on their website. So even if you, you know, were here and went somewhere else, and they're not a Pers agency, but they are reciprocating retirement system. but they are reciprocating retirement system, it would still count.
Sure.
And vice versa, it would still count.
Okay, and like I said, I just wanted to get on the record because of how I read it. Potentially councils change, city administrators change, you know, and I didn't want somebody else coming in later to try and.
You're forever.
Try and, yeah, which is fine with me, everything's great, but I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I have something come up later where someone said, well, you were hired in 2018, and because they can, agencies can say, we're not going to hire you at the classic rate, we're going to bring you on.
They have to have a different tier in their contract. And so like, there was some, did Telegraph do it?
1937.
Nice, there you go. I know it's 19. So there are some agencies, what they did is they split their classic tier. So there was the ones that were already working for the agency. And then to kind of help with the whole, they split the classic tiers up. So if you started before this date, your grandfather didn't get this, but if you start after this date and you're a new employee, you're still classic. But you're not going to get 3%, you're going to get 2.7%. So that's what they did. But that would have had to have been approved by the Board of the Council. It would be part of the M O U and it would be part of the Calpers contract. It's not something that can be subjectively done on a 2020 basis.
Yeah, because I've seen just chiefs positions, other places, that they're hiring chiefs at a higher Pers rate than the classic rate. Just because these are Pers, you know, these guys have been Pers for 30 years or whatever, some potentially. And so that's what made me think, well, if they can just decide which, where they're going to throw you in the Pers bank, you know, what they want to pay in, I didn't want that to come and bite me later on or something somehow.
Now, and the other thing is Calpers, when, when you fill out your hiring paperwork and they enroll you in like Calpers, it knows your full security number, and so it knows where else you can get a, 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 you know, number.
Okay, that's one way of saying, you're okay, yeah, don't worry. So, and then, yeah, I mean, the real practical effect of Pepper has been the police chief. Like in your, in your situation, like this is Vincent Rob Thompson, who's, you know, who's Pepper, he came over from the FBI. And so what happens is there's typically a higher city contribution to the 457 K, even matching or non-matching. And then the pay winds up paying a little bit higher, so they can put more money into the retirement system to keep up the same level of city contribution. So whether or not Pepper winds up saving all that money, I think. I don't probably agree. That was all, I mean, I'm good otherwise.
All right. Any other public comment, online or anywhere else?
And just starting with the other reason why this would be beginning to be some track it is because if we did that within the other days in history, we would have to run it fast.
We just started from.
Hey, well, I will make a motion, I'll make a likely go.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 2219, which approved the M O U content.
Between exempted employees?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're first, I'll be a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove, same side? Okay, I made discussion of financial review, let's get in for that.
Okay, so it seems like you just did this, but that's definitely a common, I don't know, people. Um, and then.
They changed quite a bit, I mean.
It's, it's. We're almost up there, we're almost up there. Um, so, you know, kind of the same spiel for the most part, you know, we should be at that, what, 80, what did I say? 83%. Revenues are about 76%, but we don't get the other half of the motor vehicle in lieu from the county until later. I think it just came in actually, and so you'll see that in May. But it's a pretty sizable contribution, so it sounds like. And then same thing with the April property tax, we'll post that in May. And then franchise use will be called in May. So those are, even though it's, it's April distribution, we don't physically get the money from the county until May. And then expenses, theoretically, they would benchmark around 83%, but the good news is we're only at 64.2%. So the main contributor of there is overall salaries, proponent part-time, and then also lower anticipated outside the cost of heat, so that's that. Still have this issue with transportation products. This is specifically on the whole mortgage rate problem. So Rebecca is, you virtually were being with Caltrans to get all of those invoices tied up and then we will start seeing money flowing back in. It's just a cash flow issue, that's that, we'll get it. And sewer revenues are 106% instead of 83, so that's good. And water is 91.67% instead of 83, so all really good. And we're going to exceed the budget on both of those. Sewer more than water, but that's good. We just started, we're just starting to actually do utility late fees and door repair fees, lock offs and restoration fees, but honestly, we just started that, so we're not going to. And specifically, whether it's sewer or water, there were projects that have been contemplated in the 2122 budget, but these didn't count, they're being stacked. And so it's fully stacked up now, so those projects are going to be incorporated in the 2223 budget. Uh, yeah, it all gets carried over. I'm also, Michelle and I are working together to kind of go through a cost allocation. I think what happened is it's been staffed, like my position or Rose's position or, you know, whoever's position has been split between the general fund, water and wastewater. Part of building was split between water and wastewater and general fund. And it's just really not appropriate. And so those types of things really have to be allocated based on some sort of fair and equitable allocation. So whether it's number of employees, number of transactions, number of checks that get cut, size of budget, whatever it is. So it's fair and equitable on all departments. And then we'll allocate costs on that. So, so my hope is to get that all squared away, so it's contemplated in this budget. So we'll see probably more expenses budgeted into the general fund, because that's where that's going to go. But then you're going to see that cost allocation coming back in. So it'll, it'll look a little bit different in the budget, but it will all work itself off. And then we're working with staff. I just finished working with Chris and Dave on the public works water and wastewater. Chris coordinated with his staff as well to make sure what is it that we need? What are things that are kind of, you know, falling off? And, you know, where can we do repairs, what projects do we want to roll over, slow down, all underway right now. Like I said earlier, Michelle has been working with Rams to cut over all those internal accounting processes, all those additional postings and any credit or corrections, which we can't always part of the loading contract annually. And.
House questions, staff questions? Public comment? Online public comment?
Online public comment.
Okay, this was just an informational thing, so thank you. Yep. And then administration report?
Um, yeah, let's see if I can.
Yeah, we have a process, yeah. Any council report while you're pumping that one up?
Yeah.
Council report, you're up.
Girl, you're up. You ready, council report? If we did the card through dinner, whatever, we could have that way gone to county and I.
All right. Yeah.
Fair Cape Town dinner was Wednesday the 4th, which was well attended and pretty exciting. Kind of like media night and all that fun stuff for fair. I went to the Chamber mixer on the 12th for the Calvert County Chamber that was out at Fairgrounds. And then I attended LACCO last night. And what we talked about, there, we established a committee, I think we'd previously established that committee, but it was formalized last night to assist and facilitate the C S Ds that are non-compliant. So any C S D that's out there for roads that are non-compliant, this, this task force, this committee, is going to help work with them on ways that they can become compliant with their government requirements, their website, and their, all that. So task, it's going to take a while. And then we worked on the budget, which means 2223 budget. That was it, all we got.
So COG was on the 4th, a pretty bright agenda. We had a long presentation regarding the.
I have it.
The C P A?
I have it, no.
No, it was a.
Right, that's Calvers transit, yeah.
Oh, sorry, so that was for, yeah, transit.
We've allocated some money.
And then we did the C N A C, so I forget what C N A C stands for, I think it's what it's called, but anyway. Um, it's, it's funding that we are, we applied for and forgotten approval for, for the Angels Creek Trail.
Right.
But we're not going to be in construction until 2425. Like there's the, there's the time needs, the funds that COG has to comply with. And they can't because we don't do construction until 2425. So what we did is we negotiated with COG to lend the money to another agency. And so they work on their projects. I think that agency needed like 20 million dollars or something. So they're getting like holiday things. And then when we're ready to do construction on the Angels Creek Trail, then that money should come back and then we can along that way.
As far as the Caltrans report, so the C P A standouts, the first week of May, there's no Caltrans employees this, this full year, not going with the pass away, which is great, that's great. May's bike fund, and then E B S pass will be open after a couple more weeks. And then the local agency updates, Robert reported that he received a call from Feinstein's office regarding his funding. And the request, they will be supporting that request and submitting that, and then construction's continuing. They've received the project manager with the side, and R F P should be out in the middle of May for a six-week advertisement. And public works will obviously prepare, and then on C T A, the bus is operating for fair. Which we get good from that. On the 12th, I attended the Chamber mixer along North Jen out of Frogtown. And then on Saturday, I spent a lot more time than I thought I would at the Junior Frog Jump. And it was really great, I commend ACBA, they did a great job, there was a lot of excitement and turnout. And as someone who's a foreigner is here, I like to see the tradition do the great one. And then yesterday was LACCO. And the fair starts obviously on Thursday. Come up to see the, Miss Calvert's, should be a good time. How many contestants? There are three, one brought her and two to Calvert's. Wow. And yours truly will be empty.
Aye.
I did COG, and that was, the Highway 4 was kind of a big, they hit asbestos, so I had to shut her down for a couple days. Yeah, and then, but we should get a side tour at some point, so that's exciting. Eastern segment, the county is awesome, they've kind of front loaded some money on that. I know Amanda just moved back to talk to people, and she is trying to get that funding to happen quicker so we can move right in from the Western segment to the Eastern segment. So here's a cross of fingers, she worked her magic or something. The electric vehicle versus hydrogen vehicle, because it's going to be a state mandated thing, coming very soon, 23rd, I think. But they don't have a vehicle to go from San Andreas up to Bear Valley or Murphy's a couple times. So we're kind of this predicament, it was mandated, but they don't offer a vehicle that does what we need. Also, U W P A had budget, working on that in the U of L summer. And Joel, we are a water year three, so we do get a kicker of 300,000, which is nice, better than the other direction. And that's all I got on that.
So for me, we had Comcast come out and give us access for police coming up to the hall. I knew when they came, I knew when I gave the appointment, because they were going to come out until now. Because they're, they're, yeah, they had to run a lot online to make that happen, but, yeah. So, but I'm working with Chris Jack from Computer Fireman and Calnet to switch over. There's a lot of Calnet equipment that's in City Hall that we don't have access to, so they have to solicit that. People leave and they think probably it's a case that they've, they've basically been allowing other people to have access through Wi-Fi off of the router. And so if we just rip it out, then they lose customers out there. So we just either need to, we just need to handle through that, but it's happening. And then because that's all their equipment, I had to order a switch and a P P M router. So those are coming from government connection. We switched from. We had a switch from Calnet, which is D S L to Comcast, which is much faster. But we need that in order to allow people to get in, in order for our internet not to do this all day long.
So, sorry, so people couldn't P P M in for?
Uh, no.
Nope. We couldn't work with them.
I did. But what she did, she didn't P P M. She left her desktop open and used it like terminal.
I tried remote desktop in.
And then, and then used her personal computer at home to have her, to point to her desktop.
And then they're using what's existing and then.
Use your personal computer at home. To remote into your desktop, that is what P P M is.
No, no.
Virtual private network.
Yeah. So I forbidden Rose from doing that.
It's like a security, yeah. You're like an IT department's banker.
Yes. Big fail on that. Okay, and then working with departments on 2223 budget. I'm also working on, I mentioned this a little bit about on water and wastewater regulations. The good news is they just re-rolled all of C C W D's role and regulations that were pertaining to water and wastewater. So we probably will start with that and then identify what works for us and what doesn't work for us. But we definitely want to have those things in place before we go out and have to another top 21 team, because we really have to kind of tighten that whole process up. But that will definitely be brought forward for a proper review and adoption and available for the public to weigh in on, on what, what those changes could be. And then, like I said, we only have four policies that have anything to do with an hour of water. So you didn't talk about the water. And then as of tonight, we have. So, so staff are operating on historical practices that have just changed. And I got P S P S access through a portal through P G N for myself and Crystal Flynn. So we will be able to get all sorts of mapping and access, you know, recordings and, you know, so that will kind of help us keep our, our staff and council in the know. Joel reached out to me and he has actually told his girlfriend to do with W P A, it's going to actually do at Fairwood. And he wanted to kind of, you know, what is the W P A, what's the J P A? And how can these three agencies coordinate with one another? And so we found a banner that had an overload on it. Summer was having one turn it up really fast, and Joel had a new one. And then I'm just making some handouts, suppliers that we can put there that talk about our water rates we're going to be going up, because we're in here for a big, well, we're going to go into here for a five-year.
Basically going in on the fifth year, right?
July. And so July 22nd and July 23rd. And then also the Calways rates are going up, so just wanted people to know that as well. And point out some projects that we've completed or are in the process of doing, including like the U of Park, just so we can. Just so we, people are gonna start seeing that coming out. And I want to make sure that the other staff knows and points out that. So just kind of a, here's what's happening and setting kind of thing. So we'll have data as well as other information that's, that people can go back and see. I'm reviewing the long-term debt to determine which internal loans we might be able to instantly internally pay off. And which might need to be refunded for a lower interest term. So, and then beyond that, I'm working on policy development for other city functions beyond water and wastewater. And then I am working for the website replacement. I had a conversation with Chris Jack and he's down to just him. And he's, he just can't keep up with, I'm coming to you because I want a little discussion. So he recommended you go ahead and find someone else to do the website. So I'm getting close to that right now. And then I'm also wanting to be doing an ARQ or an RPM, I'm not sure yet, for IT services. So we'll still have Chris Jack, but we also will have alternative services. And specifically, we need someone to do some of the things that are beyond, you know, his scope. So we've got kind of security, kind of high-level network security, network development, kind of pulling even our offsite departments together so that you don't have to be in the building to have access to the server. So that, that will be going out and helping towards a lot of part of the month.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, we did council, we did council correspondence. Any questions? Anybody on that one? Once, twice? Next calendar, Rose, you will send that to us.
I already sent it.
You already sent it?
Earlier.
And we will reconvene to close session in just a minute and we will report out at end.